Scott, is it okay to go? Good evening, Mel Peters. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yipchuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Mel Peters Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guideline set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. On March 22, 2022, the Board extended A B 362-1 in accordance with Executive Order N-1-22. Tune into our hybrid-style Board meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube, or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you are logged into Zoom or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialists will take it from here.
Actually, President Yipchuan, I'll do my longer presentation when we get into public. But just for study session, if anybody is participating or watching on Zoom, you can click the Raise Your Hand icon and make a public comment. The President will call on you at the appropriate time. You'll have two minutes to speak. We'll take you off mute. And we just ask that you please be patient. Anybody who's in the boardroom, if you'd like to make a public comment during our study session, please fill out a green card by the door, hand it to me, and I'll relay it over to the Board President. Back to you, President Yipchuan.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Can you help me do the roll call, Scott?
Certainly. Board Member Sai.
Here.
Board Member Leanne.
Here.
Board Clerk Ng.
Here.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Here.
And Board President Yipchuan.
Here. Thank you. And our student Board Reps will be joining us later. Item three, review and approve the study session agenda.
Motion to approve study session agenda.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second? Should we do roll call?
Okay, roll call vote. Board Member Sai.
Aye.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk Ng.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan.
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, comments from the public regarding the study session agenda. Are there any public comments at this time?
We have no public comments at this time.
Great, thank you. And now we're gonna go into study session equity policy and behavior matrix. Is it Preeti? Okay.
Good afternoon. Is this working? Yeah. Good afternoon, Superintendent Jordan, Board Members and Executive Team Members. I am excited to be presenting this afternoon with the full Culture of We Equity team. We'll introduce ourselves as we move through the presentation. But just to introduce the presentation, today we are going to be reviewing the history of the equity policy and MUSD. This is work that was started last year. I believe the Board reviewed a draft last year and then asked the Culture of We Equity team to take on revising the policy after gathering additional input from educational partners. So this year, after engaging in a listening campaign, as well as doing other research on policies in the area, as well as outside of California, we have taken another step at writing a new draft. And today, we will present our team's first draft, and we look forward to today's discussion.
Hi, my name is Michelle Ekrut, and I'm the Senior Administrative Secretary in Learning and Development on the Equity Team.
Good afternoon, Anna Pardo, Social Studies Teacher, Maysville High School.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sandra Quintana, Program Manager of Mental Health.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Goode. I am a CINET teacher.
Good afternoon, Sarah Davis, Program Manager for Inclusion.
Good afternoon, Sarah Maughia, a second-grade teacher at Weller.
Deanna Saint Ten, Principal at Weller.
So we are gonna start off by just taking a look at what we have developed as a team. We have come together and created four different spotlights that we would like to put into place moving forward, kind of like our dream and what we want to do moving forward. We have our education spotlight, and within education, we want to develop and deliver some PDs, working on coaching as well as training within equity. And then also, our second spotlight is community. And within there, we would like to continue building and developing our website, having site representatives, as well as bringing in and having our community fishbowl conversations, which we really have started this year. I think we had about three or four this year so far.
The next spotlight that you'll see on there is the leadership spotlight. So something that we... Thank you, sorry about that. Something... No, you're good. Something that we continue to develop is having members available to offer support for equity situations that might arise throughout the year at different MUSD sites and departments. And we hope to have individuals who are increasingly available to offer specific feedback and resources for those equity-based challenges and to represent MUSD in our district, or if needed, outside of our school district in a larger capacity. And the final spotlight that you'll see there is the policy spotlight. And this is the essential application that aligns with what you'll see today with our MUSD Board Policy Draft. And this is applying an equity lens to our MUSD policies and practices. And we began some of this work last year with our PDs, but we continue to be committed to ensuring that we're creating equitable and actionable changes that impact our MUSD community.
Okay, and on the next slide, as was referenced, this work did start last year. So we were continuing that work as a Culture of We Equity team. This is part of our spotlights, as you've just heard, in terms of the policy area. And in order to sustain the changes that we're hoping to make, we really believe that it needs to be enshrined in policy. Another motivation for doing this work is MUSD and national incidences. A few years ago, there was a blackface incident in Mel Peters Unified, which really spurred off some of our work in this area, even though there's been a team for a long time. Is this not loud enough? Okay. Even though there's been a team for a while, this really showed the urgency in needing to move forward within our community, as well as nationally, considering the incidences that we witnessed as a nation. The next one is our significant disproportionality as a district. Our Latinx and African-American students continue to be disproportionately identified for special education, and therefore, we are needing to do a CSACE plan, or Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services Plan, as well as MUSD student feedback. So we've received student feedback via culture and climate surveys, as well as our local accountability plan surveys that are calling for a stronger sense of belongingness and really seeing its equity as a place for that to make that change.
Okay, next slide. So we did some, quite a bit of research behind our policy draft. We looked at the National Equity Project, which we've used as a resource just as our equity team, but just to help develop some common language that we put into the draft. We also, quite a few of our team, and I know other people here, have read the seminal text by Imbrum Kendi, sorry. X. Kendi. Guiding, thinking of a lot of our... As we went through our equity team, we have conducted an MUSD listening campaign where we met with different departments within MUSD. And then we also held a Google Meet Live with anyone within MUSD that wanted to meet with us and allow us to listen to their impact on race within their department and anything else, other feedback they wanted to give us. We also reviewed the CSBA, which is the California School Board Association's sample for an equity board policy. And I believe the first draft that you saw a year ago was based off of just that sample and nothing else. We've also looked at two other... We looked at four other districts within California, and then also one that was outside of California that had equity policies. The two that we felt the strongest about was the San Lorenzo policy, which is adopted, I believe, in 2021. I believe it was May, April. And then the Stroudsburg area, which was recommended by a team member, which is in Pennsylvania, Connecticut? Pennsylvania, thank you. But we liked the formatting a lot of that particular word policy, and that one was adopted by their district in May of 2021.
So the sections of the format, really, form drives function. We wanted to make sure that we came up with a form.
Hello? Okay, sorry. So the next area deals with like the form of the policy, because form often drives function. And we wanted to make sure that we are coming up with a format that would allow the content to be organized and easily digestible, because the content really is what it's about. So when we looked at the policy, we made sure that we broke it up into these three main sections. One is the purpose, which obviously is the rationale, the reasoning behind why we're doing this policy. The second section is the definitions, which again, we want to make sure that we all are speaking the same language and on the same page, so that everyone's clear on what the policy is saying. And the third, most significant section is the guidelines section, which again, sort of prioritizes like each area of action from the district in terms of where to focus within the policy. And then last, and most importantly, there is also the authority section, which gives the district the authority to actually implement the policy.
Next slide? Sorry, these might be out of... Can you go to the next slide? Thanks, and then we'll flip back. Okay, so in summary, right, in thinking about why do we need this policy, it is easy to miss something we're not looking for. A number of us are participating in a seminar around creating belongingness, and they named that as unintentional or unintentional bias. So the goal of this policy is to intentionally foster belongingness. Areas that we see that this policy will immediately provide support is around environment, when we think about culture and climate, and the next session that you'll see around the Code of Conduct and the Behavior Response Matrix. That work that's happening there needs to also have the overlay of an equity lens or an equity policy. Student access to resources, so the work that the Curriculum Policy Committee is doing, or resources more generally that are allocated, when we look at that, we want to make sure that it is bringing an equity lens. Professional development, that when we think about PD for our entire staff, when we think about PD for our school leaders, that we are bringing again an equity lens to that work. And then workforce equity. This could, you know, what are some of the immediate applications of this? This could be through the revision of interview questions that we ask, like when we... Let's review the questions, bring an equity lens, would we make adjustments to them? Yeah, student accesses, so immediate. This could be through looking at our Curriculum Policy Committee and like what's the process that we're using there, reviewing our documents and making sure that we are bringing an equity lens. Another immediate application that's listed there is a number of teachers this year have reached out either to their site-level leaders or to district administrators, saying like, "We're making text selections, and we're getting questions from families about why, or is this appropriate? Can this be included?" And so then, again, the equity policy would be a guiding document that would allow us to support the decisions, well, allow us to evaluate and then make a judgment of support for curriculum decisions at that level as well. So these are just sort of thinking about how does this abstract policy, like what does it end up playing into? And then I'm gonna hand it over to Deanna.
So thank you for letting us give you that introduction and some background. We do want to give you time to look over and read the policy. If we can provide a little bit of preface beforehand, we met, I can't even tell you, numerous times to draft this, try to come to consensus. It is a draft, but we are all in alignment with the intended outcome. Historically, our schools have not produced equitable outcomes for all of our kids. So we wrote this policy in the hopes... Some of it's aspirational, some of it is guidance-oriented, with the hopes that we can create better outcomes for all of our students when they leave our spaces and then go off into the world. So we are intentional with our language, and we are not hoping to produce things as they are. We're hoping to disrupt systems, create change. So if you can, we're asking, read the policy in totality. It is very easy to stumble upon one word or two and halt there, but we're asking you to review it as a whole. And then, again, we'd love any questions or feedback. It is a draft. Give some time for reading and review.
Someone in your introduction mentioned the term equity-based situations and challenges. Do we recall who said that?
Sarah said it. We were talking about how we'd like to leverage ourselves as equity members in one of the spotlights. I remember when the incident happened at the high school, I was fortunate enough to be called over there to lend support and guidance on how we could support students with that challenge. That is what our equity team is hoping, that we can be called upon when situations like that occur. That's what we meant by that one.
And there have been, since that incident, there's been a repeated number of those incidents? Or there have been other incidents that you guys have been not aware of?
We're not aware of all of them, but that is one of the intentions of that spotlight, to leverage ourselves as support, so that site leaders, department leader... Is that what you're asking? Did I miss it?
You keep going. We'll get there. We'll get there.
Sorry, there was discussion up there. I think some of us are known as go-tos. This person will come and help, this person will be a support, this person can be a thought partner, this person can be a challenge pusher. And we want to expand our team and broaden our team to make sure that we always have those resources available when issues of racism, prejudice, inequity happen at our sites and departments.
And so you guys have been go-tos for those particular issues currently?
Not as largely as we would like, but yes.
So when you say not as largely as we would like, I guess what I'm trying to look for is, when I heard, you know, equity-based situations and challenges, I'm thinking, okay. And I'll read your preface and your other comments about the document. My thought is, okay, is there something going on now? Because we referenced three years ago? We referenced three years ago. So I'm like, is there something going on now that you guys have been dealing with as a part of this process?
We learned a lot from our listening campaigns from department to department that we are excited to further synthesize, because I think we have some actionable steps forward in how we can create more growth. Some of us were recently asked to be on expulsion panels to be that lens in those scenarios and those situations. Is that addressing your question?
So you're saying that equity-based situation or challenge could be a wide variety of things? Oh, we finally got a nod out of everybody, because everybody else was kind of like stiff for a minute. Okay, so an equity-based challenge could happen with between two teachers? A teacher potentially and a student?
With our families.
With the family, with a textbook, in terms of what they're reading or how they're reading about it?
That's what Preeti was touching on, too. I think a lot of our teachers are trying to bring in more culturally responsive literature and curriculum into their classrooms, and they're receiving some pushback from families. So supporting them in guidance of how to navigate those conversations is a way that we've been loving. How to communicate it with your families, like as a teacher, right? Not knowing what to say to your families, that maybe this upcoming book, or this is what we're gonna be talking about, just having that outline or guidance of who you can come to to ask those questions.
So if I heard you correctly, that the parents who have concerns about what's being taught in the classroom are coming, and the role of this group in that scenario is what?
So far, I mean, I don't have to be real... Like so far, we've had...
No, they got a couple of the mics over there that no one's picking up. I mean, I see that.
So far, I'll just say this part, so far, we've had a principal reach out to us for some guidance, and we've had a teacher reach out to us for some guidance.
And I think what I would add is that I think the role of our team is multifold, right? So one level, like if you look at the spotlights or the ways that we see our work, is again, multifold. So one layer, one way we're trying to do that is by drafting policy and creating support for the equity-led work that is happening across the district, not just with the nine of us, right? And so we want to provide support for that. I think the other ways in which we're trying to do that is also through PD or through individual conversations with folks. So when the teacher is trying to figure out, like, well, how do I have this conversation with my principal? Or how do I have this conversation with a parent, that we are providing a place to talk through that?
Section, which then would be like the website, as well as our site representatives, as well as like our fishbowl conversations that we've had, that we can continue that learning on how to have those difficult conversations.
And I would add as well, since I had said it initially, that the spotlights continue to be aspirations of ours. So there are certainly parts of the spotlights that we've been able to work on, and other parts of the spotlight, like I think the one we're discussing right now, where we see there's a need, that we've seen a need in our own schools, or we've seen a need through our listening campaign, and that that has brought to our awareness that we could be resources and build the tools to be resources for those individuals, but that that's something we're building the tools to be able to do increasingly based off of the need we're seeing.
So would you agree that an equity team should represent the entire district?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm looking, right, and I'm not gender biased or anything like that, or what I'm like, or classified versus teacher versus administrator, you know, I'm just looking at the nine. And then when I hear things like listening campaigns, you know, we visited schools, you know, I'm always just me, I'm always a number guy. Like, you tell me, over the course of the past year, we've visited three elementary schools, two middle schools, the high school, and we did XYZ. Now what you tell me, all of a sudden feels different, because I got a lot of data. I hear departments. So when we do that, just for me, my listening, it gives me a better context of the historical work. I know you've been busy. I've tuned into a couple of the online Zoom sessions to participate and to listen and those types of things, but this is a different part of the process now. And we have other board members that didn't have the ability to hear those things as well. So I want this to be as fair and as equitable, not equitable, not fair, because this isn't about being fair. I want my responses to this process to be as sincere and honest as possible as I review the policy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing a good point. I would like to find out, too, how did you guys, you know, form this group? Because I don't see a representation of our district, right? I mean, we have all ladies here, there's no males, and also, there's no, not one single Asian person when the majority of our population here in Mel Peters is predominantly Asian.
I was just gonna say that this all began... Well, sorry. This all began as a voluntary process, and so it was put out for the whole district as an invitation, and the people that you see here were the people that showed up. That's essentially the short answer. And the configuration of the team has changed. We had had people leave, new people come in, and so we still have one male member, but he is in a family emergency at the moment, so he couldn't make it today. We keep inviting people to participate. After our fishballs and so forth, we put out invitations or, you know, interest forms, and we're reviewing those, see if we can bring more people into the team.
And that's what I would like to share. So we have 39 staff members within the district that have filled out an interest form. That's a very small percentage in our district, but it is after each one of our events. So we've had 39 people. Six of them were classified, 23 certificated, nine administrators. We asked them in the interest survey which areas of our spotlight they were most passionate about. Most of them picked one, a few of them picked more than one. So out of 39 people, because again, some of them did duplicates, 17 were interested in the education spotlight, 14 was interested in community, 12 in leadership, and 13 in policy. So we are the core team. We invited people to be part of our core team. We did lose a couple members, but we're the ones that were more committed at that time that we get formed to with the process and with the commitment to see this through.
And I'll add that I have communicated that we do need to make sure we make an effort to invite, so that we do have representative from our Asian, because we do have Preeti who is Asian.
I was gonna say, I do identify as Asian, South Asian, and Asia is a very large continent and represents many different countries, and we have students and families representing many different continents. So I don't believe that I can speak to everyone's experience, but I just wanted to acknowledge that there is an Asian member on the Culture of We Equity team.
And to add to that, we are also seeking to try and find an East Asian representative who would like to be a part of the core team amongst, if not the 39 and the 12 that Michelle mentioned, seeking out others. But it is, and it is a continual process of building relationship. And this core group that we see in front of us evolved since 2019, when we began our very first Culture of We Professional Development Day for the entire district. And at that time, I think we started off with about 40-something people, and then that group has changed with, as Michelle gave you the history. So it is definitely on our radar, and there is email documentation that we need to make sure that we have somebody from the East Asian descent represented, and also more males would be. I'm sure that that would be something else that we would like to... And not just males, but also other gender identification.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Michelle, for those data points that were very important to me. I really appreciate the level of detail. That was very helpful for me.
Sorry, Vice President, I have to step out for five minutes.
People had a chance to...
People had a chance to, to read through the equity policy itself. And we'd love to engage in a discussion about, um, the draft. And, and to add one more data point, um, we, yes, that's the, the policy itself. And then, um, in terms of the listening campaign, we met with nine different departments. Um, and, and in each of those departments, people, there's, you know, sometimes there was ten people there, sometimes there were two, two or three people there. Um, and it was followed up with a Google survey, so people could, even if they weren't there, could share their point of view.
Staff like to invite more than just departments, so we had teacher voice as well and classified voice.
Okay. So I heard someone say that we were very intentional in our language. And we're all in agreement of that intentionality in our language. So walk me through a couple of the definitions, if you don't mind, whoever, whoever is the appropriate speaker. Um, you can just grab your pens and kind of give me a checklist on it. Uh, walk me through, um, educational equity, barriers, cultural proficiency, opportunity gap, and a Culture of We Equity Team's mission.
I can start with the first one with edu-, oh, sorry.
Yeah, but before, before you get started, I want to say, um, when the board, when the equity policy came to the board last, I believe it was last year.
Last spring.
Last spring, and we reviewed it and we began to review it. Well, we found ourselves in a situation that most school districts are in. In that information comes down from CSBA or someplace else with a policy. We look at it, we make a couple of edits to it, and then we pass it and we move on, and then it sits someplace and no one's really involved in the process. And when the board last year agreed, uh, to, um, with the superintendent's recommendation to engage, uh, the staff in this development of this board policy, there was a lot of meaning and purpose behind it in terms of some of the discovery that you guys have done. And you guys have called out and some of the questions that I've asked. So I want to make sure that you understand that this part of the process for me has nothing to do with the level and the quality of work that you guys have done and the things that you brought to light that this district needs to get worked on. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Um, and looking at the educational equity one, um, we def- we definitely use the National Equity Project as our reference. We've also done that in, um, the beginning of the year when we used our slides, um, to, for the Culture of We Equity Team welcome. So we wanted to refer back to that as part of our framework and looking at the definitions. Uh, specifically that it noted, um, such that we ended up defining later, uh, terms such as barriers or barrier-free. And that's why we chose barrier later to define what we mean by that. We also thought it was, um, important to really list out what personal characteristics could mean. And we're really intentional about repeating, you know, race, cultural identity and personal characteristics and chose to define what personal characteristics meant when we were referring to that within our definition of educational equity. And we really wanted to be able to have language that we could be understood throughout the document. Um, which is why we pursued some of the definitions, even within our definitions, to make even more clear what we meant by that one. Um, and did I, I don't know if I explained that well. Do you want me to go a little bit more into it? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Anybody want to take barriers or? Okay, barriers. So, um, as just referenced, we wanted to define barriers since we mentioned it in the educational equity definition. And so basically wanted to show that these are not just things that are physically in the way, but ways of being, ways of conducting business, ways, um, that are, um, written down, but also are potentially hidden in, in terms of, um, prac-, that, uh, policies, administrative regulations. And then the procedures and practices are maybe the ones that we're not as aware of, that we really want to investigate and make, um, explicit. So, um, and then also referencing the explicit and implicit biases in these facilitate, uh, facilities, budgeted funds, uh, curriculum and instruction, staff, class size and school climate. So we did list a nu-, um, numerous items there, knowing that something can either be used for progress or it could be something that hinders our progress and really wanting to keep a keen eye out for if something is a barrier.
So in that definition, one of the things that you guys mentioned is barriers is staff.
Yes.
Could someone expand on that a little bit for me?
In talking with some students, um, they don't always feel represented in their learning spaces. And then therefore that connection and, um, ability to thrive in that space can be a challenge. It can be a barrier. It doesn't mean it's an all-out hindrance, but it can be a barrier. I think also just staff opportunity and access to grow professionally, to better serve the populations in their room. We identified that as a barrier. And then in our listening campaigns, uh, staff, some staff in certain departments mentioned, uh, lack of representation in their workspace as well as a barrier.
Thank you.
So cultural proficiency, um, on this one, you cultural responsiveness, culturally relevant, cultural-
Is the mic working?
Be on-
Scott, is the mic working? Is your mic on?
The green light is on. I'm talking, Preeti.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, so we've talked about, um, you know, i- in our education space, we use, uh, cultural relevance, cultural proficiency, um, culturally relevant. Uh, we decided to, to focus on cultural proficiency and then create, um, some understanding around that, right? And the idea here is that it's not just about access to different things. Like this is the piece where, um, microaggressions or how we interact with each other can come up. And those are the things that we want to work on. So it's not just about diversity and representation, but it's also about our interactions and the, the different ways in which we might learn, really thinking about individualist, individualist cultural practices, collectivist cultural practices, and how those show up in meeting structures as well as, um, in our instruction.
I believe the next was the Culture of We Equity Team's mission, um, and-
Opportunity gap.
Oh, sorry about that.
If we're going in order, which one?
The missions first.
Which one?
The mission is first.
Oh, mission, yeah.
We can do either one first. Um, I have, so I have Culture of We Equity Team's mission listed, um, next, if that's okay. Um, one thing that I wanted to highlight in our mission statement are the action words that we intentionally ordered. We have expose, apply, transform, cultivate, and promote. And when we were coming up with our Culture of We Equity Team's mission, we were very intentional, um, about trying to consider how our actions, um, were going to first expose, um, what we needed to apply an anti-racism lens to and how we could use exposing the challenges in our education system to transform and therefore promote equity in our community. And so those action words, um, are something that I wanted to draw attention to in our mission because I think that that's something that outlines, um, in a very actionable way, what we want to do with our team.
And one, uh, final reflection about the-
Hold on. So on that same topic, Culture of We Equity Team's mission, um, I see we have expose how embedded systemic, uh, systemic white supremacists. Can you explain to me why we use white supremacists in, in, in this phrase?
Absolutely. Yeah, we are very intentional with our language and I, if I had to guess, I think that's why Anna was, um, potentially going to jump in.
Uh, so essentially, first of all, I would like to make a distinction between white culture and white supremacy culture.
Okay.
Um, just highlighting the fact that white supremacy culture stresses the idea that there's one group that is better than others. And if we establish an education system when ideas about the superiority of one group over another were prevalent, then we embedded in the education system that we create those ideas because th- those were part of the culture of the movement. In order to change that, we need to be, um, intentional about it. It's not gonna happen just because we wished it to happen. We have to look for the problems and fix them intentionally. And so if we're not looking for those, uh, values that were there before, we will continue to drag them on with us. That's why that phrase is there.
So when I read that through, um, briefly, I, 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 I feel that the choice of word in that sentence, um, i- it's like a, it has a connotation so that people can ride on it. Instead of promoting love, you're riding on hate to promote love. And it's very, um, divisive. It's not unity. So I could be wrong, um, but maybe we, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm here to listen and see if you can explain why I'm wrong.
Well, Tarn, first of all, you don't have to, uh, put a disclaimer on your comments, uh, and, and then go to the fact that you are wrong.
Okay.
That language does make people-
Not wrong or disagree with, with my comment. Disagree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I would just say that in order to fix a problem, you have to identify first. And so if we believe that there are legacy issues from a system that was established long ago, then we have to be able to identify it. And to identify, you have to name it. That's essentially it. And then once you name it and fix it, you can remove it because the problem has been fixed. But if you're not even looking for that problem, you're not, not going to see it. And then you're not gonna fix the problem and you're gonna keep dragging things that have been there forever because you're not looking for them.
Okay.
The, the history of education is uncomfortable. If we go back and our team has engaged and then we engaged the entire district in a history walk of our educational system, how it was created and has evolved over time. It was not intended to create equitable outcomes for its participants originally. And as Anna was saying, I thank you for explaining it in that way, like that, those values that were embedded years and years and years ago, we still carry many of those systems and structures today.
So you're, you're saying that in Amer- someone, someone was-
Somebody want to talk on the video? Is that another?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, make a brief comment on, on that point about the history of the education system. Um, and, and yeah, there, if you look at, um, certain, there's certain elements of, um, education history in America that are not so pretty. Um, you know, one of the things that comes to mind is the, uh, reservation schools. That were often, um, Native American children were sent there and they were told not to speak their own language. And anytime they did kind of speak their own language or, um, express their own culture, um, they were punished for it. So, um, there, I mean, there is that history there, that there's been, um, education being used as a tool of cultural erasure and language erasure. And, and I'm not, you know, um, I'm not afraid to, um, you know, bring up some of those uncomfortable histories. And I look at even in recent years, right, they uncovered, there was this school in, uh, Canada that was, um, built on top of one of these sites and they actually found, um, the, the bones of, uh, children who had disappeared there a long time ago. So, um, yeah, uh, um, just wanted to put that out there. So, um, I am committed to, um, I guess, recognizing some of that history and changing things for the better. Um, that's all.
Um, as, as this is an active, interactive discussion, uh, oh, we have a, for president, we have a-
Mr. Weinstein?
Yeah, the green card.
Scott, can you, um, have a green card for Mr. Weinstein and?
Um, you got your green card? Okay, okay.
Joseph Weinstein, um, partner in an interracial marriage for almost fifty years. A parent of two interracial kids who've come through Milpitas High School, I mean, uh, all Milpitas schools. I'd just like the board to clarify something for me, especially after the last statements. My understanding of my investigation of this whole policy is this is about Milpitas School District, not about what happened in Indian reservations, not about what happened in the rest of California. My understanding after reading the state policy and what their directive is to us, is that we create a policy for this district. Could somebody please correct me or educate me on that? Cause I'm not sure, I want to be clear in what we're talking about because I'm here about this district, not the rest of California.
Thank you. Will be Preeti? Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I would just say that this district, um, was not born by itself. It became as part of a larger system and therefore, again, it absorbs some of the practices, culture of other systems that preceded it or that are around with it. Uh, and one example of how some of that culture is shared is, for example, textbooks. Uh, nobody creates a textbook for our district. They're usually state textbooks. And so they reflect more than just our district. And sometimes they may not reflect the same values that we want to promote here or don't include the things that we would like to have included here, is those kinds of things.
Time check. Okay, great. Um, echoing the sentiments of, of what you have said, Anna, and understanding the sentiments of Mr. Weinstein and also what, uh, what Boardman Brasi said is that this is, uh, a topic that we cannot be afraid to embrace, um, and to approach. And in the process of that embracing and that approaching it, we all have to continue and take a deep look at ourselves as, as a, as a part of this process. And I heard in the conversation some, okay, um, national, um, international part of the reference in terms of- in terms of how we came along to this term of systemic white supremacist values as it relates to America. Is that accurate? Is it also accurate to say that because we have gone beyond the local environment to the state, national, international environment, that education more often is used as a weapon for many than a tool to uplift all in human society? So in America, we see it as potentially as systemic white racist, white supremacist values. But in Asia or in Japan or someplace else, they would call it something else because the conqueror became the oppressor and then they would have a name for it as well. Is that accurate? Okay. So, and then Anna had mentioned the fact that there's a difference between, she said, white culture and white supremacy. White supremacy culture. And then she said that she would have to explain it. How successful do you believe you think that we'll be able to explain that in the district? And then how successful do you believe that we'll be able to explain that to the parents? And then how successful do you believe that we would be in explaining that to the children? So I understand what the language is. I understand the intentionality behind it and I understand where you want to go. But I would caution you that if you want to move forward with this language, then you are going to defeat your own purpose before you get out of the box. That's food for thought.
Thank you, Vice President. We have another public comment here from Marissa Koida as a public, not as in her role, but as an independent member, correct?
I know that this term, Marissa Koida, community member, I know that this term can be polarized, but I think it is important that people know the research and know that education was created to keep a stratified hierarchy, right? And to keep those marginalized people still marginalized. I'm newer to Milpitas, but I do believe it was a land that was inhabited by Native Americans, I believe a group of Aloney people, who if we looked now, I don't know if there are Aloney people still here. And so why is that? And if we think about white supremacy characteristics, there are things that even I perpetuate that I don't know. Perfectionism is one of those characteristics. And that doesn't allow for students and teachers to think about a growth mindset, which is needed to make sure all of our learners succeed. So I understand where some community members and the board question this term, but I think we really need to have a discussion around the importance of it and the white supremacy characteristics that we all are perpetuating in... in schools because that's just inherently how schools were structured in this country.
Mr. Weinstein? Mr. Weinstein, can you pass the microphone down?
Yeah, first of all, I agree with a lot of that just has been said. And I don't want you to take the challenge as a direct challenge, but consistent with what Board Member Norwood said, my concern is, as a parent of two interracial kids who reviewed this policy, spent the weekend calling my daughter, my son, a bunch of her friends, not one of them agreed with the white supremacist statement. That's number one. So talking about who our audience is, two of my kids are in their 40s, but two of the other people that I talked to are in their 20s. If they don't see that, I'm not sure how successful we'd be. But the other thing that very much concerns me is when you use that white supremacist term. I don't believe, or I hope it's not coming from here because I just wanted to point out a couple of different things about your statement. One is you use the word embedded. Embedded means fixed. We have Chinese, I mean Hispanic immersion classes. White supremacy did not fix that. That was a change. During the 80s and 90s, when the Hispanics in the area changed the terminology that they wanted to be referred to, there was nobody in the district in control that tried to stop that. In fact, it was embraced. When our soldiers came back from the Vietnam War and we found some very, very disturbing comments and titles, we, as a school district and community, worked to educate our teachers and our community about certain words that were no longer going to be accepted or used. Black Lives Matters. How often have we, over the years, I want to remind everybody about Chuck Gary, an African-American principal of the high school. I want to remind everybody of how many times we have met as parents as districts, going all the way back to the 80s where we have dealt with the subject of discrimination, where we've tried to change. When Glenn Ishiwata was the superintendent of schools here, we, I'm sorry, assistant superintendent of schools, we went out of our way to make sure that we educated teachers and students on the internment. There was specific application of trying to do that. I think when you use the term embedded in regard to this school district, you're not only giving yourselves a disservice, but basically every single one of us who's been involved, me for the last 50 years, in trying to improve equity, I think basically it is just, it's just basically saying that you do not recognize at all the changes that this district has made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein.
I would like to bring to the table that since I have been trying to promote this work in our district and it goes beyond 2019, we did that work with Dr. Robinson. We had multiple committees and teams years before that. This team is not a reaction to what happened at the high school a few years ago. Many of us have been engaged in this. I've been in this district 15 years and I've been pushing myself to be beyond the classroom to try to create different outcomes than what I experienced in school because I care about this community so much and now I'm in a school system. No matter what we've done so far as a team with all of our discussions, it doesn't really matter, if I'm honest with you all, what words we use. When we say bias, people are saying we're being divisive. The minute we even use the word race, we're being divisive. I get actually very enthused by these conversations because people don't have them. And we learn that even more recently with these conversations that we've had in our various departments and with kids. We do not talk about race in this district at all, from what we've heard. So I'm encouraged by everything that's being said. A lot of it is very prompting and triggering. This just proves why we want to continue this work and continue moving forward. We're always open to any voices at the table. But just to put that out there, of course, certain words are going to jump out, but it actually hasn't mattered over my 15 years, what word is used. Anytime we bring up equity initiatives, often we're told we're being divisive or that we're trying to go back with progress that's been made.
So I want to thank you for the comment and your long-term commitment to this work as well as this amazing team of individuals. As I said a few minutes ago before we started in the conversation, this is necessary. You know, there's a reason. I don't know what the reason may be. You may discover it. You know, there's a reason why race isn't talked about often in Milpitas. For good, bad, whatever that might be, that is actually the case. But society is talking about race and it's permeating into a variety of cultures and it's making, and it's triggering a lot of things for a lot of people. So as I go through this process, I got to step back and just do some basics. Like if I'm, and I'm just being, this is just me being transparent. If I was nine people, I had three men, I saw the diversity represented through the district, I'm like, they all agreed on this, huh? Okay, I'm gonna ride with it. I'm gonna look at that and say I'm gonna ride with it because it is a diverse, it is a very diverse group that's saying, we believe that this community is ready to have this kind of conversation and within our education system. A lot of the things that you guys have shared with me already, whether you believe it or not, whether you use this language or not, there is significant transformation along the way, in process. I want you to know that and I want you to see that. And from the very first Culture of We All Staff event to the evolution of trying to cultivate this type of group of leaders to be a part of this, it's very, very encouraging to me. We know that we have work to be done and I am definitely one about wanting to see success. I don't want a policy that I can't see have success. I want to be very, very clear on that. I don't, then we might as well have not done it at all and just the board just rubber-stamped it and we moved on. So let's make sure that we all have a clear understanding of policy, success, process, climate, and all the different audiences that we're dealing with as far as this process goes in Milpitas. Thank you.
President Yipshon? Wonder if I say...
No. Go ahead, go ahead, please.
So a recent term, a term that I've recently come to know is the messy middle. And the messy middle means that we let go of the barriers that our society and perhaps the world has been putting up, especially in the last six years or so, where we create different biases around who belongs and who doesn't. And certain buzzwords, and when I say we, I mean people in general, certain buzzwords create an instance where people shut down and they don't want to even engage in the middle. They want to take their side. And when I first saw the systemic white supremacist, I thought about a person very close to me and my family who if she were to read this, she would shut down and she wouldn't engage with me in conversation. And I'm certain that there are a lot of other people like that. And so I've been thinking, what other word or words could we use that call it out so that we have more people who are engaged or willing to come to the middle instead of taking their sides? Because until we can get people to let that guard down and stop othering each other, I don't know how to get there.
Superintendent Jordan, you've been extremely generous with the development and the education of this team. We've been able to engage in numerous trainings, workshops, conferences to further our knowledge base and to further our expertise in facilitating this work. Every single one that we've been to, I think it's safe to say, correct me, has told us that we shouldn't let those that are not ready guide our work, that we move forward with those that are ready to move forward. So I just, that would be a challenge for us. So every development that we've had, the literature that we're reading tells us you cannot let your work be halted by those that are not ready for it. So then we would need guidance on like what you would suggest moving forward.
Okay.
So I appreciate the panel and, you know, the team's work on this. I would say, you know, in my profession, there is professional language to have open, honest conversations. You can call out the intent of what you're trying to say without necessarily using some historical words that elicit barriers. So you really want to think about the intent of moving forward, you know? When we look at this community, do we really have a historical issue? Because someone mentioned as far as if the problem has gone away, we changed the language. So the really question is, do we really have an issue in this community? Now, from that standpoint, you know, we want to focus specifically as far as how do we get those individuals or those folks in our community to progress forward in having that open, honest conversation? Because some of these words are already creating lines of divisions. And we're not trying to create lines of division. We're trying to create a circle around everyone to understand each other, identify with what you identify, but tell us a little bit more about your identity so that we understand each other.
I'm going to circle back in some of the things that people, the teachers have experienced and the staffers' experience that they mentioned earlier are between staff members, staff, student expulsion, textbooks, in terms of how they're selected, how the school district does its funding of its programs, based on historical practices. And the language that they use here as far as systemic white supremacist values in public education, right? That's what it should be. It should be public education. It's trying to call out a lot of things. And that phrase encompasses a lot if you know what it encompasses, but for those that don't know, that won't get there, it pushes them to the other side. And I respect what you said about we can't wait. I want to just make sure that we don't have an audience that will not allow the work to continue because you guys are making inroads across campus. I did have one other question on the fact that in your definitions, how did the Culture of We Equity Team mission fall into the category of definitions? Because obviously it's very different than the other terms that you guys have called out. So should that be, you've got purpose, you've got definitions, should the definition or the about us, because it doesn't flow in the same way F definitions do? So that's food for consideration as well.
Yeah. The reason we decided to put it in the definitions, we kind of went back and forth a little bit about it too, is because under the guidelines, in number one, in welcoming in an inclusive environment, it says the district shall adopt the Culture of We Equity Team's mission. So we wanted people to have that preference in the definitions or somewhere in the document so that they would know, yeah, it's under guidelines, it's number one. Third page. So we wanted to...
I heard you say adopt and I'm not finding that term.
The district shall adopt the Culture of We Equity Team's mission.
Right. So then you created that definition there so that we knew what the Equity Team's mission was.
Yeah, so that it was within the document.
Thank you for that.
Sorry, Mr. Joseph Weinstein, you have a hand up?
So I'd like to go back to barriers for a second.
So I'd like to go back to barriers for a second, especially consistent with this last discussion. Why did we leave out of barriers the cultural systems like caste or the religious beliefs that basically are blocks to what we're trying to accomplish?
I, I think it's a valid point you brought up, and I'm glad you did. When we were doing the definitional section, we were trying to be as explicit, but also as comprehensive as possible. I think you brought up a really valid point. At least as one member of this team. And that would be food for thought for adding that into the definition.
You know, when I look at the guidelines there, you have a line that really tackles at the heart of what you're saying, right? As far as, you know, providing pathways that actively eliminate systemic disparities based on race, cultural identity, and personal characteristics. So, you know, we always talk about consistency. So, so why wasn't that line utilized in the Equity Team's mission?
So we, we included it in our purpose for the policy. We included that line and then reiterated it in the guidelines. Our mission was actually created, I want to say sometime last year. So it preceded the creation of this document. That's just kind of a logistical answer to your question.
Gotcha. But, you know, we, we kind of talked a lot about, you know, the terminology. You have that terminology there. That really can create the same effect, I believe.
Hit that one more time, Deanna, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, thank you.
That statement that you pointed out is more closely aligned to a statement we have in our vision statement, not the mission statement. So I don't know if that suggestion would be maybe to include our team's vision statement as well? Maybe?
It's a good thought, right? You know, again, we talk about consistency, when we talk about educating, right? You want to be consistent with the language that you use. Because that will, you know, stick in the minds of all that read it or all that identify with it.
I think we're, it's 5:18 right now. What, um... Do you guys have other questions in the guideline areas?
No, I don't have any further questions. Again, I really thank the team, because this is a tough conversation to have, but to really come together and, and, and get to this point is amazing. It is necessary in our district as far as the, the board policy, because we need some language to help guide us going forward.
Yeah, I mean, this is a rough draft, and I know that, you know, probably need to work on some more. And for me, what stood out was when, you know, Vice President Norwood mentioned that if this was a group with, like, you know, maybe equal men and women, or, you know, about equal amount, and we have, you know, more diversity on the team, and this is what the group agrees on, then, you know, it's more, I think, fair. But because I, you know, we have, I mean, because I know you mentioned that you tried to get recruit, but then we talked, or you mentioned that, let's try harder to recruit more diversity on the team. So...
You can't force people to be on the team that they don't want to be on telling. No matter how many we go talk to. You can't force people who are not interested in this work to be on it because they are of a specific ethnicity or gender. That is even worse.
Before we go on with the conversation, I would like to suggest that perhaps we can do some sort of survey or thought exchange with the, with the equity policy that you have here, presented to the board, to see what others come, input we get. And I'm wondering, President Yipchuan, if there are, we have been tackling the one phrase about white supremacists. I'm wondering, are there any other pieces to the equity policy that the board considers, I don't know if anyone wants to say a stumbling block? The reason I'm asking is, if it's this one piece, then I wonder if, like, if we set up a thought exchange or survey, if we provided the whole thing, but then asked a question specific to that mission? Or maybe we just naturally let it organically, see if that's something that people comment on? Because we could get more, more input that way, on what people in our district feel about it.
And I would just like us to also consider, because we've heard this a couple times now today, that diversity is not solely based off of gender. We've been doing work to share our stories. The diversity of this team is pretty vast and expansive, beyond just gender or ethnicity. So I would like us to just remember that, and I would hope that. Because we don't have more men on the team, our work is any less valid.
Agreed.
Agreed. Mr. Weinstein, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make the point that in Boston, a number of civil rights groups that I've been involved with, that when we've been unable to get the people that we wanted, we expanded the team. So I'm looking here at this team, and it seems clear that people or employees within the district of a certain or a few ethnicities don't want to participate. I am sure that we do outreach to the community, that we can get some representatives of those ethnicities to join this team. I think that is much more important than keeping it to be just employees.
I, there's a whole lot more going into the makeup of this core team. And the core team is responsible for a great deal of professional development in our district. And I appreciate that suggestion. However, I think for the purpose of this team, that's, that's just what you're talking about, is a smaller piece of the work that they do. And there are actually avenues in the whole of the work, and pieces of the work, that will involve parents and community, and also students. This year is the year that they really started to work on implementing some of the pieces that they put together last year, when they put the whole framework together. And so it is an evolution of what this team is going to do. And I am extremely excited about and thrilled with this team. I still remember the day that they said to me, and then it was about 30 faces on Zoom that I was looking at, when they said that they want to take on this work, and they asked if I would step out of the way and let them lead. And that's something that I've wanted since being a principal at Palmer Elementary School, where we met regularly as a management team to have these conversations. And never did we include, until one year, teachers or classified team members. So it always just stuck at the management level. So that's why I was thrilled to see all of those members of our team step up and say, we want to take this on. And so I, I respect the suggestion about going out to the community to recruit people for the team. However, the evolution of where they're going, right now, that's not the, not the time. Maybe next year, as far as one of the strands of it, but not right now.
Anybody else have comments or questions? I want to say thank you very much for the time and dedication. I know it was a lot of time. Sometimes we can agree to disagree, but I know at the end of the day, we, we're all here for the right reasons. And I really appreciate, you know, and I'm also learning. We're, we're learning from each other. So thank you. This is a, a, a good draft so far. And, you know, I know we will continue to work on this, right?
So it sounds like, President Yipchuan, that we need to have, that the board would like to have more input from a broader group. Is that correct?
If we have the time now to find another word to, you know, substitute for that white supremacist, where people read it through, nobody would have to, to raise a question. But again, you guys work so hard. I brought it out there for us to discuss, for us to at least rethink of just that. But everything else looks good. And I appreciate the hard work, and I appreciate the commitment that you put in.
I think, just to summarize, you have the framework. There is some discrepancy with some language. And, and hopefully you can focus on that and bring that back to the board.
Okay. So I think, yeah, I think, thank you. We appreciate you taking the time to engage in the policy and this discussion. And, and, and thank you for summarizing your feedback. So we've taken note of that. We will take that back as a team and me, and work on this again. And then I'll work with Superintendent Jordan on a timeline for, for reviewing the policy again, and, and going through the process of, of what it might look like to adopt it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we're gonna do a quick five-minute, five-minute break before we go to the next one, right?
Yep. Okay. Before we go to the behavioral response, the matrix?
Are we going to close session after this?
Hi, men.
Hey, Wendy.
Oh, wow. They're urgent. People are still excited. They don't want to come back.
That's such a short charging keyhole.
Is that an iPhone? I mean, iPhone. Here.
It's okay. It charges. It's such a short. No, I'm good. I'll plug it in.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. That was a very engaging topic earlier and now we are moving on to, is it?
Behavior matrix.
The behavior be, behavior matrix study session. Executive Director, Learning and Innovation.
So next we have presenting our, no, sorry. It was just the Culture of Equity team. But next we have presenting our Code of Conduct and Behavior Response Matrix team. This team has been led by Secondary Director Marissa Koide and I'm sure she and her team members will introduce themselves. This is, again, work that is coming out of our significant disproportionality assessment from the state and is tied to the root cause analyses of why our African-American and Latinx students are being disproportionately identified for special education. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members and Executive Cabinet and Superintendent Jordan. My name is Marissa Koide. I am the Secondary Director, leading this work along with the team. This is a small representation and I'll go through that, but I will start with letting the team who is here today introduce themselves.
Hi, everybody. My name is Vanessa Speedy and I'm the Assistant Principal at Sinead Elementary.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Anastasia Hersaphinus. I am the Assistant Principal at Marshall Pomeroy.
Nope. Hello again. I'm Sandra Quintana of Mental Health.
Hello again as well. My name is Kelsey Good and I am a teacher at Sinead Elementary.
Okay, next slide, please. We're gonna start with our why, which Executive Director Jahari started to share, but I am gonna start with our team members. If you could go to the next slide. Our work actually started prior to me joining the MUSD team in the spring of 2021 and you can see on this slide, all of the people who started this work a year ago. And it was led by District Leader Greg Barnes, Mary Jude Dorbinhouse was on it. And it did come out of the CSACE work. So we did have some partners, Dr. Felicia Stuckey-Smith and Dr. Mildred Brown. Next slide, please. You will see the current team. We are continuing our work with Dr. Felicia Stuckey-Smith, who is consulting with us. And we started with all of our assistant principals. And then we do have some site principals who are also on the team as well as myself and other district leaders and some community advocates. The names we have highlighted in blue are the members who transitioned over from the spring of 2021's team to now. I think it is important to understand why there was such a shift. As you know, we received ELO dollars in the amount of $80,000 last year. And with that, the DO wanted to contribute to AP salaries. And with the assistant principals' work, we know that they are primarily, they take ownership of the school climate at their school sites. So it was really important for all of them to be a part of this work and this team so they had a voice at all elementary and secondary levels. So we can, again, just have a shared vision, a shared understanding of what we talk about and our beliefs as we engage in this work. However, those who were part of the team last year were invited to join this year. We have had some movement only because with the pandemic, there were many people who were burned out, I'll be honest. And so already being part of other teams, this just felt like one more thing, that they felt confident that others who are on the team would represent their voice. Next slide, please. This is a continuation of our team. We have newly added within the last month, teachers. And we've added some staff who are representative of our guidance counselors, our psychologists. Am I leaving anyone else? Okay. And we do want to extend this to include classified staff, parents, and possibly students. But this is where we are at in, right now, currently. Next slide, please.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay. I will say, it was a pleasure to be asked to be on this team this year. Marissa, you've done a wonderful job, including assistant principals and some of this really challenging but yet meaningful work. And that's why we're here today to help speak about it to the board. It's very exciting. It did start in spring 2021, so I think many of us were aware that we were identified as being disproportionate, significantly disproportionate in our students of color, being expelled, suspended, identified for special education. So this work started spring 2021 and right now, we're really in the midst, it's December through June, of really trying to put together a comprehensive behavior matrix. Should I pause? Okay. All right. Right now, we're in the midst of developing a comprehensive, shared understanding of culturally responsive and equitable behavior practices within our school sites. And that is the work that's being done in our Thursday meetings. We've met, it says over there, eight meetings for over 13 hours. And I will say, just kind of even the time and the means to do so with the collaboration across the district and district administrators and now teachers and hopefully future class by members, parents, even students, is such exciting work because we definitely want this to be a shared vision. We want this to come together as a whole to work for all of us here at Malpitas, just like we talked, that equity team here before, right? Okay. So that was, I heard part of it and I just want to build upon that as we speak forward. So that was what we're doing right now and we're happy to share it with you coming up very soon in the next few slides. And then looking forward, what we hope to do is begin implementation. We know there's gonna be refinement and work to do with the feedback we collect from the community and from other people in our district, but we know that right now is the time to really get things going and begin implementation. We hope to do that in the upcoming school year. So that is our projected timeline as of right now. Next slide. Going back to CSACE, just to reiterate what it means, Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. And again, I pretty spoke to this and so did Marissa, but overrepresentation of our special ed students and speech, language, I mean, specific learning disability and other health impairment, it's happening at high rates in our school district with Hispanic and African-American students. And so we need to do some work and be able to fix that and figure it, go back to the why. And so right now, we really want to go move forward and talk about how we're gonna adequately engage them in learning and then what the matrix is all about as well. And I think it's... Oh, next slide, please. Yes, and our strategic plan. So it's related, of course, to our LCAP alignment, Goal One and Goal Two, to ensure our students are receiving high caliber instruction and also to ensure that they're thriving academically, socially, and emotionally in a safe and nurturing, culturally responsive school environment. And that's something that we really want to refine and hone when we work with our behavior matrix. And Marissa?
Thank you. Next slide, please. So going a little bit deeper into the goal of the Code of Conduct and why I think it was very timely that the Equity Team started to share their work with you is we do have disproportionality in this district. So I know the white supremacy term didn't go over well because we think we may be leaving people out, but in order to address a problem, you have to know what the problem is. And we have...
Tell me, understand that comment in the context of what we're doing right now?
Yes, I'm gonna explain. So we have 20% African-American students and, sorry, under 2% African-American students and 20% Latino students in our school district. And if you think about the expulsion hearings we've had this year, there's been six and it is those students who are overrepresented. And why is that happening? It's because unfortunately, those characteristics that the Equity Team was presenting is inherently embedded in school structures. Behavior in schools has been about conformity. It's been about being compliant. It hasn't been about valuing or valuing all students and what they bring to us. And that's why this important, this work is so important and it's, it is very much so tied to the Equity Team's work. Next slide, please. So our goal for the Behavior Response Leadership Team is to ensure all students' right to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally in a safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive school environment. It is based upon the laws, regulations, and policies that create equitable access to education for all while protecting the rights of the individual. So unfortunately, we did have a male assistant principal, Retchip, who was going to join us, but as you heard, he was also supposed to be part of the Equity Team, Team's presentation and he had unfortunately a family emergency. He is really knowledgeable when it comes to restorative justice practices, but I am going to try and do his slides justice. If we could go to the next slide, please. So restorative justice principles are really the lens that we're using in this work. There are six principles and I will read them to you because I think they are so important. One acknowledges the principles, or sorry, acknowledges that relationships are central to building community. Two ensures equity of voice among all members of the community. All voices are valued. Everyone is heard. Three establishes a culture of high expectations with high support. Emphasizes doing things with, not to or for. Four, build systems that address misbehavior and harm in a way that strengthens relationships and focuses on the harm done rather than only rule breaking. Five engages in collaborative problem solving. And six enhances accountability, responsibility, and empowers change and growth for all members of the community. Next slide, please. So the restorative justice approach is different from the traditional approach, which tends to be punitive. Again, the restorative approach, people and relationships are harmed. That's the focus. It's not just that rules are broken. Justice identifies needs and responsibility. Accountability and understanding impact and repairing harm are the focus. The offender, the victim, and school all have direct roles in this process. It's not just the offender. Offender is responsible for harmful behavior, repairing harm, and working towards positive outcomes. And opportunity is given to make amends and express remorse and then to really be re-entered into the community, which is, I think, what we want. I don't think we ever want to ostracize or really expel students when we know that can really lead a student on the trajectory to the school-to-prison pipeline. And I did include that fact in the heart. About 20% of schools' restorative justice practices respond to conflict while 80% are proactively creating shared cultures and building strong relationships. So again, if we take this approach, we're really focusing on building relationships with students and looking at prevention instead of being reactive like we, we have done in the past and as our data shows. So, next slide, please. Fact versus myth. I think when people think about restorative justice, they think that there's no consequences. We hear that often, actually, even from some of our staff, but that's not the case, right? Restorative justice doesn't mean there's no consequences. It just means there's definitely a process in place that allows for relationships to be maintained and strengthened and for, again, the student to learn from their mistakes and move forward and then re-enter the community. We've heard that restorative justice takes too much time, but again, if you are doing the preventive and proactive work in building relationships, you will see less impact in poor behaviors that students are making. Restorative justice is the admin's job. It's not. And as we know, all students are, belong to all of us, right? The entire community, the staff, the campus monitors, the admin, the board. We all need to take ownership. Next slide, please. RJ, our restorative justice requires becoming friends with the offender or forgiving them. That's not the case. The victim always has to agree to take part in any kind of conflict mediation that takes place. Restorative justice is about rehabilitating the offender. It's about meeting really the needs of the victim, but building empathy within the offender to be able to learn and then again, re-enter and not make the same mistakes. And then restorative justice is only appropriate for comparatively minor offenses. Again, that's not correct. Restorative justice actually, you know, is also used in, in the juvenile system. And so for even major offenses, again, the goal is to educate students, to build their empathy and social, emotional competencies so they can correct their behaviors and choose different avenues to convey whatever it is their behavior is trying to convey to then make a different decision the next time. Next slide, please, and I'll pass it on to Anastasia.
Thank you. So the Code of Conduct has seven...
So the Code of Conduct has several sections. The first section of the Code of Conduct, if I'm not mistaken, I think members of the board, you have a copy of the Code of Conduct. The first section is the beliefs and guiding principles. The second section is the rights and responsibilities, including students, parents, caregivers, staff, admin, superintendent, board member, rights and responsibilities. Section number three includes getting help, like filing complaints, including bullying, Title IX, uniform compliance policy. Section four is our behavior responses, including our multi-tiered systems of supports. Section five includes the Behavior Matrix, alternatives to punitive discipline. And section six is the appendix, including the forms and processes. Next slide, please. So our beliefs, next slide, please.
Who is the Code of Conduct for?
The Code of Conduct is for everybody. It's for all of our students. And our staff and our community and our parents or caregivers. It's for all, included in our educational organization. Is it good? Okay. So the following beliefs about children, learning, and discipline inform all code policies and practices. All children and young people must be assured that they can learn in a non-destructive atmosphere and environment and that they're going to be treated fairly, in a consistent manner, and one that is nondiscriminatory. So our beliefs, starting with the top left there. All students, children, and young people are capable of achieving their personal best and when necessary, improving behavior with guidance, instruction, with support, and with coaching. Our belief to the right of your screen there is students need different kinds and amounts of time, attention, tasks, and supports to be responsible decision-makers, to succeed academically and achieve at high levels. Another belief that we have is the use of out-of-school suspension as a response to challenging behavior does not improve school climate or outcomes for students. So students are more likely to do the right thing when they understand the positive behaviors that are expected of them, when they feel that staff members care about them and will help them learn and help them grow. They're more likely to do the right thing when all school staff consistently share, have shared languages and practices and when all staff provide recognition and feedback for behaving appropriately, making their best effort, and completing high-quality work. We believe that effective behavior response management helps students become more self-disciplined and teaches students to become more skillful. And finally, we have a shared belief that restorative practices provide strategies and interventions to enable students to self-correct, to problem-solve, make amends, repair harm, learn new behaviors, and restore good standing. Next slide, please.
So the equity check in this work, which is something we're trying to embed into all our committees and all of our different initiatives that we're doing moving forward is saying, okay, how are we really investigating how our systems are being built and/or upheld? So the left-hand side are some reflection questions that we've been engaging with. Is it going in and out? Are some reflection questions that we've been utilizing in the Behavior Response Matrix Team? We've also been utilizing them with our teams who are being trained and are currently doing the training for PBIS, or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports through our county office partnership. And it's really thinking, where are our behavioral expectations coming from? When we're creating them for our students, for our staff, for our community members, are our expectations and definitions upholding systemic inequities? Really taking that pause for reflection. Are we using our structures as another way to police BIPOC or Black Indigenous and people of colors or marginalized students? Kind of referring back to that pedagogy of compliance instead of actually looking at how we can teach positively behaviors proactively. And who does this expectation or consequence serve? Does it serve the student or does it serve the adult in the environment that they're in?
So the shifts, I feel like I've already touched on, as did the Equity Team. But again, we are trying to disrupt the inequities that currently exist in our system and also make sure that we are acknowledging that behavior is a function of something, right? Students aren't just misbehaving to misbehave. There's always a reason behind it. And Sandra's going to talk a little bit more about that. So that's why relationships are so important and that's why our staff and our community cannot have these implicit biases because it is impacting the way we're disciplining our students. Again, that's why our disproportionality is the way it is. Next slide, please.
Maybe it'll work like this. Thank you. So for function-based thinking, Marissa already alluded to that, which is basically thinking that every behavior is communication and is telling, and there's a reason that it is happening. So on to the next slide. The three... The three main reasons, and they've been categorized under two or four. For our purposes, for our team, we have made the distinction that the behavior, the function of behavior is either to avoid or escape, whether that's attention, a task, something that's undesirable or difficult to gain something, which could be tangible. It could be also attention in that way and multiple other things. Sensory stimulation is something that is reinforcing unto itself. So it could be a student who is neurotypical and has some sensory feedback needs and is tapping a pen in class. And so that might be something that's annoying, but is it something that's actually behavior? We need to discipline. So that's another example of what a function is of a behavior. And when we're addressing the form of a behavior versus, before we know the function, we're skipping a really important step. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick kind of symbolic grid of when we don't know what the function is or we maybe misunderstand what the function is or haven't done an examination of what the function is, we could actually end up reinforcing behaviors that we don't want. So for example, as a result of misbehaving in the morning, students are sent to detention during afternoon recess. An inadvertent result or consequence of that behavior is that they get to hang out in an air-conditioned room when it's a really hot day. So they're gaining something. And maybe even if they're with that same group of students that they had that misbehavior with, they're gaining social attention potentially. It also could be potentially avoiding something that's happening out at recess or lunch. Perhaps there's another student that they've been getting into it with or there's others that are other reasons that they're trying to avoid the heat. So that's just a brief example. And if we don't know what the functions are of those behaviors, we might be addressing or teaching in a way that's not actually effective to address the need the student is actually exhibiting. Another quick example is a student stopped bringing their gym uniforms to class and as a result, cannot participate in gym class. That might be okay, right? They don't get to participate in class, they gain time with friends. Perhaps they're avoiding exercising. And so really getting down to knowing the root, the function of the behavior is going to help us learn how to teach positive behaviors and how to reinforce what we're teaching, just like we teach math or reading. Next slide, please. And so when we referred earlier to taking an MTSS approach, which is the multi-tiered systems of support, system, excuse me, of supports, that is what the pyramid that we've brought back time and time again in different presentations and really want to utilize this language across the district and how we're writing our initiatives, how we're aligning what our work is looking like. And so really what the team has started to look at is the base of the pyramid, which is tier one. And tier one is something that is, can be done in a whole classroom, can be done at a teacher level, can be done at the level of relationship, really. And we want to make sure that we're building those in our classrooms, on our campus, across the site. So this is very much a work in progress, but it is the farthest that we've gone in looking at the tiers. We just started looking at tier two, which is where you need more specific integrated supports. And so this tier one is what we say that a classroom already and/or a school site already inherently has as being able to address most students' needs. And so that's also the language of MTSS, is if we're engaging in these types of supports at tier one, that most students won't need something beyond it. Won't need to go to tier-two supports where it's smaller group or more intensive supports, at tier-three where it's more individualized and more consequences that could potentially remove them from that tier-one environment of the classroom.
Sandra, are you aware that what you have in this first paragraph, tier one, was part of the WASC recommendation for the high school?
I was not personally aware, but it looks like Marissa's nodding. Yes. And so on the left-hand side, sorry, did you want me to comment further on that?
No, just, you know, making sure the right hand is talking to the left hand, you know, and all this work and all the, you know, and all the innuendos and those types of things so that we can get that level of clarity that's needed across the district.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I would probably add that, just a quick question for the superintendent, because I've heard several references to the CSACE. When was the first time that we, I don't want to say got in trouble, but when was the first time that the CSACE disproportionality was brought to the attention of the district?
We were first identified for CSACE for the 2019-20 school year. And that was brought to us with the spring prior to Ms. Dorpinghaus, Executive Director Dorpinghaus, coming into the district. It was with previous director Carla Crenshaw and Assistant Superintendent Nama Rodriguez. So that would be, last year was 2021, that'd be spring of 2020, June 2020.
And prior to that, before the 2019-2020, how we've been identified for CSACE?
No. And the CSACE plan looks at the prior three years' data and in aggregate, and then you get placed into the program.
Right, and the CSACE modification, they updated, there were inconsistencies and they updated the final regulations in 2017. So there were adjustments in 2017 to the disproportionality. And then they took effect, as far as my understanding is correct, in July of 2020. So we'll circle back on that separate from this, but I just wanted to clarify when the CSACE experience began? As far as what we track, even going back three years, 2017, 2016, right? Okay, right, because obviously, I'll just hold my comments, we'll come back to that, no problem. Thank you.
Good questions. So just as a brief intro to what we have listed in categories here, on the left-hand side are those restorative justice practices, the things that can be engaged in on a daily basis and/or when needed in the class that does the community building and also the repair potentially of when there's a rupture in the community. On the right-hand side are other strategies, including building a positive environment in a classroom. And we have Kelsey Good here who can extrapolate a little bit more what she does in her classroom to build that type of supportive environment where you don't have to engage in as many disciplinary practices when you're really engaging in those relationships. And the bottom part are only used when combined with instruction and how to correct and self-regulate. So really, the whole premise being we're going to give students multiple opportunities to learn how to engage in behavior and in positive proactive ways.
That actually concludes our presentation, but we are, you know, we welcome questions or any comments or feedback because this is kind of our first draft. It's definitely not finalized. We've taken it to our administrative team and then just added new team members. So this is the first opportunity for our community and then the board to interact with the draft and provide feedback. And Kelsey, I don't know if you wanted to expand on the things that you currently do in your classroom? Okay.
And while Kelsey is preparing that, Scott, would you please pull up the draft Behavior Matrix so it's on the screen?
Just some of the simple things that I find are really impactful. I have a morning meeting every day and we do something very small and every child has a moment to say something. We're always reflecting on things on my whiteboard. I just kind of wrote them down to make sure. I have a list of things that when, if we come to a problem, then I ask my students to do before escalating it and/or having someone step in where we say to calm down, to understand what has happened. Is there a misunderstanding between the two of you? If there is a moment where you need to say sorry because you've actually acted on something or you need to apologize, take that moment. But then also share how you're feeling, all right? Using those I statements, we have a structure of kind of how to respond with sharing that your feelings there. And then giving the space to ask, like, do you need a moment? Do you need me to give you the afternoon or can we check back in? And then just being able to have those conversations with your kids, I think that's really powerful. I also see it within a lot of PBLs, projects that we're doing, a lot of group work, like kids don't know how to communicate with each other, right? Something's not happening. So just learning how to have those open conversations is really important. And I've seen a really big drastic change within my class.
And to continue kind of what Kelsey's already doing, there are teachers and sites that are implementing PBIS and pieces of restorative justice. And so we're trying to build upon those strengths that already exist in our district. What we've talked about as a team is bringing kind of five signature regular practices that staff can grasp onto starting next year. And one of those is exactly what Kelsey mentioned. She calls them morning meetings. We call them restorative justice, community-building circles, where at every level, you could have this structure. And it's, again, it could be a fun question, right? Tell me more, where did you get your name from? But it's creating a structure for discussion and it promotes that sense of belonging. And then if a problem does arise, you have that embedded structure so that you're able to, hopefully eventually, as the teacher, just facilitate the discussion and the students are really being the problem solvers.
I think it's really important to note that, you know, our students, kids make mistakes, right? So, and so do we, every human being does. So it's a matter of what will we do or what can we do to support them for them not to continually make those same mistakes over and over again? Or when we're talking about behavior, what can we do to support them so that they're not continually showing that behavior that is not necessarily one that a student should be showing? And I think that's what's important to note, is that it's building up to support our students the best way that we can and be proactive instead of reactive in the way that we're doing things.
She's shaking her head. She said she doesn't want the mic.
That's the end of our presentation and I think you've seen the drafts. I do just want to point out on the Behavior Matrix, like Sandra said, we've only touched on the first page, I think the second page and the third page as a team this year. We haven't, none of this is really finalized, it's all a draft. But tier two, we've just started the conversation the last few meetings. So everything below that has been adapted from what the team last year started to work on. So I just want to make that clear. We have not, as a new team, been able to focus on those tiers yet.
So I would request as a part of this work on the behavioral matrix, you also look at identifying students that have had behavioral issues on a continuous basis. And then we determine the appropriate supports for them so that when they get to the high school, I don't run into a situation where I look at a student's record and I see something two, three, four times and then wonder, and then everyone is here saying, well, we don't know how this happened?
I would agree with that. And I think, board members, you had experienced an expulsion hearing now. And being privy to what was brought forward by the school site, we saw the holes, right? And that is what this MTSS structure is trying to put in place, is so you don't see a student like that, again, come into, you know, a closed session hearing.
So be thoughtful of the fact that I didn't mention any of the, I didn't mention where I saw it. I didn't mention, I didn't mention any of those things for the context of this space. space.
Sure, but I think it's important that we know that it's happening, right? And there are some holes. And so because of that, we are talking about our SST process, not only for behavior response, but for social emotional learning and also our academics, so that we are early on, you know, responding to what students' needs are, and we're not going year after year with no supports for those students to where they are, like Anastasia was saying, creating or making the same poor choices because their function of their behavior has not been addressed yet.
Scott, could you go back a slide, please, right quick, to slide one? Sorry, the second slide. I'm just looking for some of the things that Marissa just said, like the social emotional piece in here.
So social emotional, it does fall into behavior, but I think Sandra and I have talked about, social emotional is the third part of the pyramid, right? So we're talking about the behavior side today, but there's also the academic side, which my MTSS committee is working on, and then there's a social emotional side that Sandra and I have started to work on, and we are going to embed some three signature castle characteristics, which Sandra, I don't know if you want to expand on, but there are some things in here, calming corners, again, it's also with those conversations that are happening that you want to build students' ability to empathize, ability to self-regulate. So it may not be specific there, but there will be specific things embedded into the social emotional piece of the MTSS pyramid.
Thank you.
And just to expand on that a little bit, I could talk about the three signature practices, I'll just mention them here unless you want to hear a little bit more. They are welcoming activities, engagement/transition/brain breaks, so that's the second one, it could be any of those three. And the third one is an optimistic closure, and we've actually been laying the groundwork for that by doing it in most, if not all, of our district meetings, as well as other types of committees as well, so that we can, and I've also introduced it in our new teacher induction program. So there is some foundation to begin the three signature practices, and that's part of, we're using embed a lot today, but embedding the work of SEL into academic instruction without necessarily needing a curriculum, because they're building the skills that Kelsey was referring to, how to be able to engage in group work, how to be able to solve problems in a project-based learning. It helps them learn how to build those SEL competencies. I will say with any of the skills, because really this is a skill-based pyramid as our social emotional learning skills, we have to be able to have the time to teach and train our staff on how to utilize this, on why it's important, on truly a mindset shift that Marissa was presenting earlier when looking at the principles of restorative justice and restorative practices. So that's also something just for all of us to know, is that this is obviously going to take time, but it's also going to take, you know, structures of ways to train, coach, teach, uplift those who are doing it.
Will there be any tracking of restorative justice practices that are being implemented or being conducted?
I'm not going to necessarily answer part of your question, but this is what I've been exposed to, is to having fidelity measures. So for example, there's fidelity measures for doing something called a community circle or morning meetings where you can have like walkthroughs, where you, there's a certain things that are present in a circle that need to be there. So is a talking stick used, are people able to pass if they need to, things like this that you can go and look at. So absolutely, when we're talking about training and some of these skills and some of these strategies, we will be embedding fidelity checks. In terms of tracking, I can't necessarily speak to that right now, but I'll pass it to Marissa.
I think it goes along with the MTSS work, and again, this is just a piece of the MTSS work, the multi-tiered system of supports pyramid, but we have talked in LND about how we are collecting data and are we doing things with fidelity? We want to be a data-driven district, we want to make decisions based on data, and so eventually, we do want every site to have data teams around these three areas, academic, social, emotional, and behavior, so they know, right? Because again, we've said this, I think I said this earlier, but you can't address a problem if you don't know, you know, how you are even contributing to the problem. Something that my old data teams would do would be to track office referrals, and taking that information back to teachers, they didn't even realize what students they were constantly sending to the office, or the time of day, or, you know, the patterns that then start to emerge. So that piece is very important, we're just not there yet, we're still in the drafting phase, but to be able to look at our fidelity and our implementation, yes, we have to be data-driven.
Just to speak to that, some schools do, they look at their office referrals, they're in, PBIS schools have, what is it called, Sandra? Swiss, and it really will drill down what students are being sent where and at what time, and it does a whole equity check, and if you take that in comparison with, was actually what students are happening, you'll be able to know is what's working and what's not. And right now, from the data we got from CSAS, we saw that what we were doing so far as a district was just not working, and so there is, we do need to make changes and we do need to measure, you know, make sure what we're doing is working, otherwise, what's the purpose of our work? So that data piece has to be embedded somewhere, so I'm glad to hear that. I'm only one part of this little team, so it's good to hear the other parts today that are going to make this hopefully come together.
Thank you for identifying that, because as a data-driven district, we do need to make decisions based on that. Currently, we only see the negative, we don't see any practices that have been happening, and that would very much help as far as identifying really where the needs are for a particular student.
So where does the Q and file come in and the information that's put in the student's record in this work?
Is it okay if Sandra addresses part? Okay.
Before I lose it, thank you. The other part of data that we want to collect, because as you so rightly said, we want to be strengths-driven as well as, you know, have the data on where our needs are, is to, is to really collect more culture and climate-type data, so that's what the surveys are intended to do, you know, Prethee helped work with adapting one of the belongingness, you know, categories under an open-source research-based survey, and I do think that that goes in line with this, is are we doing what we said we're going to do, and is it improving the feelings of belongingness and the positive feelings of climate and connectedness and culture and all of those things? And that's another measure that we can utilize when looking at is what we're doing working. So that's.
Q and A live folders should really show a whole picture of the student, right? So anything that they're experiencing at home should be included in there, anything that, if there's been an SST process, those forums should be included in there, so that when the, and the folder follows a student, right? So from elementary to secondary, a secondary administrator or teacher can go look at the student's folder and see what's already been, you know, what meetings have already taken place, have there been interventions and supports that have been tried, and did they work or not and why, so that you can continue those kind of wraparound services for students. And again, that goes back to the data, right? Are we, are we really collecting the data that we should be to give a full picture of a student from, you know, when they enter our district at TK or what are we calling it now, pre-K? I don't know, Mary Jude?
We have pre-k.
Pre-K, all the way up to adult ed. So yes, the Q and A live folder is very important because it follows students and it's the tool that allows the next teacher or admin to know what's tried, what's worked, and what hasn't.
Thank you, team, for this great work. I'm so happy, you know, this is the first presentation in a long, long time that I'm so intrigued, and it just feels so good listening to you guys present. And I love everything that's planned out, like what board member Chris Noah said, because I have seen students having problems since middle school, but that carries on to high Why did we not capture that and try to, you know, help him, give support so that it would change a student's life? And now I see and I hear from here that you guys are going to intervene, have things differently. And Kelsey, you have started with, in your classroom, early in the morning, this is like having, I don't know, 26 kids that you are talking to, listening to each personal story. I do want to hear a little bit more of your plans and your, okay, just to stick with the plan. Share with me your restorative practices and give me an example.
Need a mic, need a mic, need a mic.
So Palmer started the BEST program, which is kind of a, it's a PBIS, it's Build Effective Schools Together, and it's very similar to PBIS. We started 2012 with the work, and one year, they're now fifth graders, I had some boys who did some harm to the school, so we brought them in, and to other second graders, by the way. And so we brought them in and we talked about what happened, why it happened, and what could they do to fix it? And so what they did was they came up with a presentation on what was wrong and how, what should have been done, and they presented it to the second grade classes. And from that, the second grade teachers did a little bit of a spinoff, and we talked about why we had the students do that and that they were basically making up for what they had done wrong. There was no, that was the consequence, so there was no punishment. But I think as a teacher, and I see those boys now, they learned a lot from that. They were held responsible for their behavior, they came up with a plan on their own, they did the research on it, and they presented it to the other second grade classrooms. And Palmer has been doing very similar things since that, since we started BEST.
Thank you, that's great.
So we're a district that accepts students at all different grade levels, and so a lot of times we see students coming into the secondary level without necessarily being exposed to the practices that we have at the primary level. So how do we accelerate restorative justice practices for secondary-level students?
Yes, I am the secondary expert, I guess, up here, but I think with anything, and I am a middle school educator, that's my, that's my favorite grade, but once you teach, I've also taught kinder, all of our students at any age level kind of have that mindset that you can, if you are starting to develop relationships with them and teaching them, right, how to learn and that you value them and they can grow, right? They can have a growth mindset and you can too, and they can make a mistake but repair and come back into the community, I think that's really powerful. It's painful when I hear at the secondary level how often our students have no one on campus they feel safe with, have no one they feel like they can ask for help from. That's step one, we have to build relationships with the kids, and if you do that, there's so much more you can do with students at really any level, even if they haven't been exposed to these. But imagine, right, our students who are in Kelsey's class, when they get to secondary level, they're going to already have the tools to self-regulate and empathize, so that's a really powerful piece, but I think at any level you can intervene.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're doing a time check, and I think we need to wrap it up soon so we can go into closed session. But I want to thank you, the team, and thank you for, Diana, for sharing a story, and Kelsey, you too, you know, understanding the students and, you know, when I was a sub too, I tried not to send the students to the office, you know, as much as he doesn't want to be there, but you know what? He's there with me. And similar to Diana's story too, is that, you know, I was fortunate to be a substitute when we had kids, they were cyberbullying, and their punishment was to do the research and teach other sixth graders and fifth graders the impact on cyberbullying, and I saw the difference that it made in those kids, and, you know, they move on to middle school, but I really liked that, so I want to say thank you so much again for the time that you guys put into this, and are there any further questions or comments, because we have to go into closed sessions?
Thank you.
But. Just to come back to what you said, we want them to come to the office for other reasons, not because it's punitive, right? So we want them to be there and be excited to be in the office and not be scared, just like people get scared to go into your offices, right? It's the same thing when they're kids, and we're adults that way because that's how we were brought up, and so our job is to kind of change that mindset to make it a positive environment for them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, team.
Thank you, team. All right, so now we need to.
Motion to move to closed session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we're going to move into closed session.
Did you record me as an aye? Did you hear?
Yes, you are an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to this meeting of the Melpetus Unified District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. On March 22, 2022, the Board extended AB 361 in accordance with Executive Order N-122. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings, online on either Zoom or YouTube, or in-person inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you are logged into Zoom or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is the listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comments on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called on. Instructions are both -- are also listed on each agenda. There are copies available on the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialist will take it from here.
Thank you so much, President Yipchuan, and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. For our virtual audience who are on the Zoom platform, if you'd like to make a public comment, you will see a hand icon by your name, and you will click that to indicate that you would like to make a public comment. We ask that you wait to be called on. We will call the names in the order they are received. We will enable your audio. We'll tell you to take yourself off mute, and you'll have two minutes to make your comment. We ask you, please, be patient. The Board President will call for any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the Board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and .3, preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the Board or district staff, and no actions can be taken. However, the Board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.3, prohibits members of the Board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by a speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the Board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We have special accommodations at our board meetings, and if you do need any special accommodations, please contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance, and we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube, and are recorded. Those recordings are available on our www.musd.org website. Closed captioning is available on Zoom. You click the closed captioning icon, and the live transcription will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the public agenda, those are public documents. They're here at the superintendent's office and available for reviewing. For those of you who are here inside the boardroom, there are green cards at the front of the entranceway. If you'd like to make a public comment, just please fill those out, hand them to me, and I'll relay those to the Board President. President Yipchuan, back to you.
Board unanimously accepted the resignation of a classified management position in maintenance, operations, and transportation. Okay, we're moving on to Item 11, review and approve the open session agenda as their motion.
Motion to review and approve the open session agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're gonna do roll call. Trustee Tsai? Board Member Tsai, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Trustee Lin?
Yes.
Clerk No?
Yes.
Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
President Kelly Yipchuan, yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to Item 12, flag salute from the Melpetus High School NJROTC. Please approach the podium and state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Cadet Tran, and joining me today are Cadets Mendoza and Delatory, and we're representing the NJROTC unit at Melpetus High School. Please rise, remove your caps, and join me in the flag salute. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
President Yipchuan, did... President Yip Chuan, did the Board review and approve the open session agenda?
Yes, we did.
Okay, can I get that vote?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, comments from the public. Are there any public comments at this time?
We have no virtual hands raised for public comment, and I have not been given a green card, so no public comments at this time.
Okay, Item 14, MUSD 2018-2021 strategic goals. Build a culture of "we" that engage parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop an educational pathway that allows students to apply their passion and learning for their future careers. Focus services and support system to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Moving on to Item 15, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Yip Chuan. One of our strategic goals is to build personalized pathways for our learners, and all of us are learners. And tonight, we would like to recognize several of our MUSD team members who have taken a pathway towards becoming teachers, and they've moved either from being a paraprofessional, a behavior intervention therapist, or a transitional assistant to now becoming a teacher who provides special services for students who need them. So I'd like to first go through those who are not able to be with us tonight, and I understand that a few of them are actually in class, and Wesley and Leonel are two who are in class. So I'd like to first recognize Lena Kankutankin, and she is now a special education teacher at Burnett. Brianna Cox, who is a special education teacher at Zanker. Wesley Kakau, who is now a special education teacher at Melpitas High School. Leonel Briones, who is also a special education teacher at Burnett. Patricia Nguyen, who is a special education teacher at Weller. And Jennifer Pizzola, who is also at Burnett. And Travis Blair, who is now a resource specialist at Melpitas High School. And in person with us, so I'd like to ask these three to come to the podium so that we can take pictures with the Board and Cabinet. And those three are Christina O'Heda, who is now a special education teacher at Burnett Elementary. And we also have Katie Rodriguez, who is a teacher at Melpitas High School. And Suzanne Moffett, who is a teacher at Melpitas High School. And Suzanne, many of you have recognized for a very long time as a special education resource teacher at Melpitas High School and also as a lead in the department. And you may be wondering, what do you mean? Well, she actually started even before being a paraprofessional as a parent volunteer. So I'd like to thank all three of you, plus the other eight of you who have taken the time to invest in a pathway towards teaching. And with that, I'd like all of us to come forward so we could take a picture.
It's definitely a pleasure to be here tonight and see a lot of people that I'm familiar with. For those of you who do not know me, I have been in the district for 20-plus years. Partly, I will tell you that I started here as a parent volunteer at Weller. I was the PTA president for six years while my student went through Weller while pursuing a degree in special education for a credential. This happens to be my daughter. For those of you who do not know, who I totally encourage to continue her education and look towards special education, which are our most needy students. And she went along and followed her mother's footsteps, and I went from parent volunteer to para, to resource specialist, to department lead. So I've grown up here in Melpitas.
Thank you for honoring me. I started out as a behavior intervention technician when I graduated college, and Melpitas was just so supportive and made me feel so comfortable that I just wanted to continue in the profession and challenge myself. So I went back to school, and I got my master's and credential in mild-moderate special education.
I want to thank the board members for giving me the opportunity to pursue my dreams. I actually grew up in this district. I went to Weller, and then when I was going through college, they were lovely enough to allow me to be a para and continue my education. I actually graduate with my credentials in May and will be pursuing my master's in the fall.
Thank you, all of you, and especially for the pathway that you chose, because it's not easy to support neurodiverse students and students who need extra ways so that they too can pursue their pathways and all at the same time while supporting the teachers who support students and their families. So thank you for the work that you put into it.
Just, this is to our community. You're an example of our employees that stretch themselves and push themselves. It's hard to go back to school while working and whatever, so thank you, thank you. And this is to our employees. We have a residency program with San Jose State and our EPIC program through the Sacramento County Office of Ed, and we have several employees currently involved in that program. So we're gonna continue to build and grow our own in this district, and that's something to be very proud of, and you're an example of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, HR, for continuing that pathway, along with our Executive Director of Inclusive Services for All Learners. Next, your call. In coming back from the December break, we all experienced that tumultuous surge of Omicron, and we were looking ahead to the February break. And one thing we learned from the December break was if only we had received those tests soon enough so that we could make sure all of our learners had the opportunity to test before returning. So fortunately, with Canton Chu and Lisa Lee of Big Bang Artwork, they provided us that opportunity during the February break for our learners to test before returning to school. So I'd like to recognize you for your contribution to our community and keeping us safe.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm really honored to be here, to meet you, and to meet all of you. You know, we're very happy to serve the community. When we see all the parents, all the students leave with satisfactions, that brings us our biggest happiness. So Big Bang Artwork is a nonprofit that tries to offer K-12 students opportunities in different ways. So we're trying to give some hands-on experience in creativity, business, and mentorship. To do so, a program called International Youth Reading Program. This program showcased importance of reading, listening, and public speaking. So reading discovers more possibilities at an early age. So students and children will be inspired to discover and explore their multidimensional potential. So during the process, they can learn, they can try to practice their public speaking skills. So we have bi-weekly events to either offer students opportunity to practice their public speaking skills or invite speakers in various fields to share their successful stories. So after they have a general concept about different industries, they know what they want to be in the future. We have another program called Youth Volunteer Program that offers them leadership training and community service. For example, we work some startups to offer students as early as 13-years-old entry-level interns. So they will be trained by full-time professional employees. They can learn the skills, exercise the skills, and gain experience. So we hope every student can exercise and learn the skills, and then when they are at the time to make their final decision about your career path, they have a very clear concept about what they want to do. They know what is their interest, they know what are the most interests, and then they will achieve success much easier. So we hope with Big Bang, every student can earn knowledge, gain experience, can expand in their horizons, can progress in a lifelong journey of learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And we didn't have a picture with Canton, so if the two of you could come up again. All right, next, we'd like to recognize Juliette Gomez and the Melpitas Community Education Endowment for your donation of the book that you wrote, Can I Push You?, about empowering learners to stand up to bullying and also learning how to build an inclusive learning and community environment. So I'd like to ask you all to come up for a picture.
Well, thank you very much to Rob and MCEE. Really, my mission in writing the book is to create an environment where kids can learn to stand up to bullies and to be brave. Also, it's about a forever friendship. So it's how to create friendships and how to keep them. And acts of kindness, and simple act of kindness can create not only a friendship for a school year, but for a lifetime. And the book is based on a true story about my friend and I and how we met in kindergarten, and we went through life together until she passed, and we're still going through life together in spirit. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. All right, next, I'd like to recognize our young Chloe, who we saw last fall as one of the National Merit Scholarship finalists. But now, she is actually one of the National Merit Scholarships winners. Nationally, only 1.5% of all juniors who take the PSAT qualify. So then it's only 3% of that 1.5% that is then selected to be eligible for a large number of scholarships, over 7,500 of them. And so far, Chloe has received at least one that I know of for 2,500. And so Chloe, I'd like to invite you and your father up for a picture.
Thank you, Chloe, thank you, Mr. Yip. And as part of our MUSD Navigator series, we selected Chloe as a MUSD Navigator for this month, and we have a movie that, or a short video, that illustrates how she got here. So if everybody could take a step and take a look at that.
My family immigrated here from Malaysia when I was about four. It was really hard, because all I remember was leaving my grandparents, my cousins, everyone I'd grown up with, and moving to this new country and arriving in this rainy, wet weather. And I think it was really weird and isolating, because it was such a big change for me as a toddler. For my parents, they worked really hard for me and my sister to have better opportunities in life and day to day. It was my parents liked to emphasize that we came here for better educational opportunities, for a better life. Music is a really important part of my life. I've been playing piano for years. I'm in a band at my church. I'm in band at school. So I don't know, music is everywhere for me. I can't really escape it. I play it when I'm studying, I play it when I'm like using, I play it when I'm driving. So it's just, I don't know, it's really inescribable. It's like everywhere. I was notified last November, I think, that I was a National Merit semifinalist. And obviously, that was a big deal, because I didn't think I'd achieve that. And I think a month or two ago, I was notified through mail that I had become a National Merit finalist. And that was obviously a super big deal for me, because it's obviously a step up from being a National Merit semifinalist. I got the notification that I was a finalist through mail. It was a piece of paper that was like, oh, congratulations, you're a finalist. Here's all the information you might need to know. And I mean, I was like, it was a Saturday morning, I had just woken up. I was really out of it. I was super, I mean, I was super excited. I ran down, the first thing, the first thing I think was run downstairs to tell my parents in the kitchen. And they were super excited, obviously, and I got a hug, so that was nice.
It's a pretty tough and rigorous process. National Merit Scholarship Corporation is an organization that really... that really sets forth throughout our nation, you know, standards of rigor for academic performance. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation does this annually to recognize the wide talents of our students nationwide.
Growing up through MUSD, I started in Zanker for my kindergarten year, and I had Mrs. Bellinger for my kindergarten teacher. She was just an amazing teacher, I really loved her. She's, she's obviously a really amazing person. I think at the end of the year, she gave me a list of like spelling words, like I think butterfly was one of them, and for a kindergartner. That was like, that was a crazy, that was a crazy word. So obviously, she believed in me so much, and I just really appreciate her for that. After Zanker, I went through, I went to Sinit for first through sixth grade. And some teachers that really stood out to me there were, I think, Mrs. Lawanzen, my fifth-grade teacher, and Mrs. Tan, my third and fourth-grade teacher. Right now, after high school, I'm planning to go to college. I want to major in some kind of neuroscience and maybe traumatic brain injuries as a physical therapist. I'm still figuring that out, though. As for where I'm going to go, I'm still not sure. I'm thinking right now, as of the moment, Northeastern University in Massachusetts or staying in-state at California State U Long Beach.
Hey Chloe, this is Mr. McMurray here. On behalf of Rancho, I'd like to congratulate you for your selection as being a National Merit Scholarship finalist. We're really proud of you and keep up the great work.
Hi Chloe, I am super proud of you for being the National Merit Scholarship finalist. Congratulations.
Congratulations Chloe on your incredible accomplishments. It's certainly no surprise because you've always been diligent and engaged, and I'm just really excited that you can be recognized for doing such a good job academically.
Congratulations Chloe, I'm so proud of you from all of us here at Sinit Elementary.
Congratulations Chloe on this achievement. You make us so proud here at Milpitas High School.
Chloe, you are amazing, a National Merit Scholar. That's thrilling that we have a Trojan who is now a National Merit Scholar. That represents a ton of work. And we're excited that we get to say congratulations and look forward to hearing more about what you do in the years to come.
I just want to thank everyone in the MUSD district for providing me with the resources to achieve this accomplishment.
Yeah, please, really thank you very much, the district, for all the help and the nurture and the guidance that's given to us and to us as well, the family. Really appreciate it, again, very, very appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, strategic goal number one, build a culture of "we." That's what we do. And that's it for our recognitions tonight.
Hello? Chloe, I just want to say congratulations personally. It's a very great accomplishment. I won the scholarship myself when I was in high school. You've got great things ahead of you.
All right, next up, we have my COVID report. April 26th. That's crazy. We have, I think, somewhere in the twenties as far as how many, number of school days left. A lot to do in a short amount of time. So looking at our vaccinated, unvaccinated overall, you see that there is a slight uptick expense. I last gave this report, which was March 8th, so a little over a month. And you can see that for those who are vaccinated, it's up by two per 100,000 since last time. For unvaccinated, it's up by 12.8 for those since last time. And for overall, it's up 0.8 per 100,000 since March 8th. Looking at our vaccination rates, ages five to 17, it keeps fluctuating. So when I reported it on March 8th, the data that I had from the California Public Health Department had it at the 90th percentile, and prior to that, it was around the 60th. So I'm not sure if there was some kind of correction made. I remember for about two weeks there, the vaccination data wasn't available. So I imagine that this is a correction, and that's why it's at 74.9. Looking at all of those who are eligible with a booster, it's up 1%. And for all ages, it's up about 0.7% since our last reporting period. Now let's take a look at the number of cases that we've had in our school district since March 7th. So again, it's about a month and a half since we last reported. And you see that our overall number is 1,090, which is just a little over 100 students and employees who have had COVID since March 7th. We continue to stay in what the California, I'm sorry, what the national level has indicated as low for our county. So as long as it's in the low area, then masking in schools continues to be strongly recommended when students are present. So board members and cabinet, when the students are no longer in the boardroom, then we can remove our masks. And we already saw our navigator. And that concludes our COVID update, and we can move into the superintendent's cabinet report. And we will start with Rancho Middle School with Principal McMurray.
Good evening, thank you very much for this opportunity to be here and to share a little bit of the work that we're doing at Rancho in support of our emerging bilingual students. This is probably the most excited I've been to actually give a report to the board. Usually, I'm just a little enthusiastic, today I'm actually excited. We have two incredible teachers, Cindy Cortez and Cassandra Rodriguez. They are our ELD teachers at Rancho. And we have three students that just really, I admire them, and I am so glad they're here. We have Ginger Benavides Perez, we have Joseph Guerrero, and we have Montserrat Espinosa. And so they're going to participate with us, they are all newcomer students. And I am really grateful for their time this evening in joining me. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over first to Cassandra. She's going to share a report on our writing with design work that we have been doing with our LTAL students and SIDA students and newcomer students in ELD.
And LTAL means?
Sorry, LTAL means Long-Term English Learners. They've been in the country five years or longer, they're still designated as Emerging Bilinguals or English Learners.
All right, if we could move to the next slide, actually. So this is just a little bit about writing with design. It's our writing program here at Rancho that helps us plan our ELD instruction and the data we collect from our triennial assessments help us to target our students' areas of needs as well as identify their strengths. It's been an extremely helpful tool with the reclassification process. And for the most part, over the past two years, our students who are successful in this program have successfully reclassified or have come much closer to reaching those requirements. So these are the data charts to show our students' writing progress from this school year. The first chart shows the fall, which only 2% of our students had met a proficient level of writing. Moving forward to spring is the next slide. 80% of our students were reaching a proficient level of writing. So they've demonstrated huge growth this school year. And then additionally, we can see some great student sample, writing samples, where they began the school year with writing maybe three sentences and now are writing four-to-five paragraph essays. This writing tool has helped us to plan differentiated instruction in our small group work based on student needs, including grammar, sophisticated writing choice, and to differentiate our instructional strategies. And overall, it's been a great tool to allow us to individualize student instruction and to teach writing as a process that starts at a simple level and to build upon that simplicity to create and express complex and sophisticated ideas. So now we're going to move forward with Cindy Cortez.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. I am the newcomer teacher, and this year has been a very unusual year as far as my newcomer class. We had a huge influx of students. One week, we, I probably got three new students. We averaged probably one newcomer a day, right before we went to distance learning. So, but at the moment, I have 16 students from many different countries, El Salvador, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Afghanistan. So we needed an urgent, they had an urgent need as far as computer literacy. So we came up with a newcomer boot camp where I, it was a two-week newcomer boot camp where I asked, where Raul Patino helped me with my students who have been here since the beginning of the school year. He was in my classroom while I trained my new recruits in the library. So I taught them everything from computer literacy, how to get on Aries, how to get on Google Classroom. We took around, toured around the school, we met staff members. What else did we do? How to get on iXL, Benchmark Advanced, just how to compose a Google Doc, how to do Google Slides. So Google Forms, and also how to use translation tools, the Immersive Reader, Google Translate. So I was able to orient them to their new learning environment. Not only that, we learned new survival English, how to ask to go to the bathroom, how to ask for help. And so I think with all these new tools and resources they had, they were able to feel welcome, comfortable, and secure, and happy. And I feel these students are generally happy. I see them every day with smiles and just laughing. And so I am happy that we got to know each other. And for me, the best part was just being able to build a relationship with them. I got to know them better, build rapport with them, and just know their backgrounds and their journeys. So that's a little bit about what we, what we did at Rancho to welcome our newcomers. And it's been successful. Thank you. And, oh, and I have one of my recruits, Joseph Guerrero, and to explain a little bit about the boot camp.
Hi, my name is Joseph. Hi, my name is Joseph, I am from Nicaragua, and I am 13-years-old. I learned to write and speak English with their, with their many activities and games in the boot camp. The school helped me, the school, the school, oh, okay, I am nervous. The school helped me in writing and speaking English by practicing through the iXL classroom, by show my performance, and I am grateful to my school and to my teacher. Thank you.
That is one of the reasons I'm super excited to be here. We got two more, actually, we got four, but two more that just really energized me. So as Joseph shared, he had his boot camp experience, and we've had really interesting, different, a surge this year with our newcomer students. First time in the United States, first time in school in the United States, and just coming from a very different situation. So it was an organic experience that kind of happened at the beginning of the year when we kept on getting these newcomers. And I had, we had such a great group that were already there from the beginning, including Ginger and Montserrat and Joseph. And so when we got these new students coming, I went straight to them and I said, hey, I need your help. We have a new student, he's from Nicaragua. And their eyes lit up, and they were like, oh my gosh, who is it, what's her name? And they came to my office with me, and I had them, I called them my little ambassadors. So they came, and they were like the, the most, the greatest welcome committee you could, you could imagine. And so I asked Ginger and Montserrat to share a little bit about that kind of being, representing Rancho for our new students, introducing themselves, where they're from. And then they would take these students that were brand-new, and they would give them a guided tour. We're talking about eight students, guided tour, here's your class, here's what you do, here, in their own language, and it was an immediate support group. It was the greatest welcome to a new school in a new country that I could ever imagine. So I wanted them to share a little bit about that experience in their own words. So we'll start with Ginger.
Hi, my name is Ginger. I am happy to know that we gave a good welcome to the new students who do not know English like you because I know that it's difficult to enter a new environment without knowing anyone. Thank you. Hi, my name is Montserrat.
Montserrat.
We try to make them feel comfortable and interact into our group so that they feel safe and give them a proper welcome so that they feel confident in the school. Thank you.
So I forgot to tell our strategic goals, but focusing services and support systems to ensure all students are engaged in their learning, making social, emotional, and academic gains, and identifying creative, creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. So that's what we've tried to do. I really appreciate the time we've had to share a little bit of our work with our emerging bilinguals, and thank you very much for your time.
Next, I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations, Mr. Jonathan Brunson.
I didn't want to have to follow that. You guys are amazing, thank you so much. Teachers, thank you so much, you guys did such a great job. Real quick, our trustees and our executive cabinet and our second-grade teachers and the Kiwanis are celebrating a book that was written by Meg Medina called Evelyn Del Rey: Returning to School. Can you see that, Scott or David? And so we're going to our schools across the district and just sharing this culturally responsive literature about these two young ladies having to learn how to say goodbye and at the same time, experience opportunities for a growth mindset. And we're also celebrating that our, the author is a woman who encourages reading but also wants to depict our many different cultures in her short stories. So I want to thank the trustees for volunteering to go out to the school sites and executive cabinet and our Kiwanis. Marcia Grilli deserves credit for this wonderful idea, and we'll do it again next year. And the second part of my report is just that I'm so proud of the Kiwanis and the fundraising they do so that our students at the high school, Milpitas High School, Cal Hills, can get scholarships. And at the crab feed, I think we did a little over $30,000. So I just want to thank you to, you know, our own superintendent, Cheryl Jordan, who helped do a lot of the organization of that, but also our president, Joe Lowry, and Marcia Grilli. And then, yes, in HR, we're preparing to move because there'll be, soon we won't be in this building. And so we're going to be getting ready for that big move. So I just want to thank my team for their support and just the wonderful things we're going to do to end this school year and get ready for next.
Executive Director.
Oh, just a quick question for Assistant Superintendent. Is there management, is there training for management for micro-aggressive behavior here?
Specific training for that? You know, I, thank you, Trustee Norwood. You know, I know through the Association of California School Administration, we are You know, I know through the Association of California School Administration, we are looking at those type of trainings and supports throughout the state of California. And I know there's workshops. I can look more into that for us. But as far as training here in the district, that's something that we can begin to do that work and support each other because we'd have noticed that those opportunities have come up and so we need to look into doing that. And then the presentation you saw earlier tonight was restorative practices can be used to help heal that so that it's one thing to do training, it's another to heal any time there's harm that's done with that, whether it's intentional or unintentional, the harm still needs to be addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll add that our equity, Culture We Equity Team has done some training on microaggressions, at least as far as what it is. They did that in January 2020 and definitely it's something worth revisiting regularly.
At all levels, right?
Yep.
Including management?
Yes.
And executive cabinet and all those folks as well?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Executive Director, Priti Johari.
Thank you. And Scott, if you don't mind pulling up the PowerPoint, thank you. I'll be a tiny bit long-winded because like everybody else, I'm also more than excited to share my update today. This April break, through the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant and the Comprehensive Improvement Grant, we piloted a new program that we called April Academy. This was a week-long enrichment opportunity at the elementary level and an opportunity for credit recovery for alternative education high school students. For all the students, this was an opportunity to immerse themselves in project-based learning to create relevance and authenticity for the skills that they were learning and practicing. A quote from a family member to highlight the impact of this was, "My son talks about the different projects he learns every day. He doesn't want to be late to school or be taken out of school early because it is so much fun." So when we make learning authentic and create relevance for what we're learning, it's fun and that's what we're trying to grow and continue to expand. So as I just share some of these examples, Scott, feel free to just flip through. There's pictures showing our students, our first graders explored structures and behaviors of plants and animals and then designed a nature-inspired solution to a student-identified problem. Third graders investigated local species, researched and recorded information, and communicated those findings to larger groups. So they also had authentic audiences that they were presenting to and guest speakers. High school students planned for their futures by engaging in financial literacy and engaging and changing the world through their own poetry. Ultimately, we had 134 elementary students in grades one, three, and five, and 36 high school students participate. So this was just a small pilot to see if that, to see if we had educator interest, student and family interest so that this might be something we grow next year. I really want to give a big special shout out and thank you to Andrew Din and Kimmy Schmidt in collaboration with the LND Department. They led this work. And then our teachers and support staff, right, all these people worked over April break. So that was, that was a big leap that they needed to make, that it was worth it to give up that week off and participate. So we had Raquel Mendoza, Megan Benz, Wendy Lundin, Kelly O'Connor, Jacqueline Yerke, Vivian Sun, Tiffany Nitani, Eiling Sung, Nicole King, Mai Au, and Cheryl Davis. For more juicy quotes about the April Academy program, I encourage you to check out an article published on LinkedIn by Scott Forsner highlighting more about the program. Thank you.
Executive Director, Mary Jew Dorpinos.
I'll be a bit briefer. In collaboration with our state technical assistance facilitators on our CCASE 2021 plan, we conducted a deeper analysis of our root causes for underutilization of the Section 504 plans for measurable outcome one. And we will continue, we will not use that in the future, but we will continue with other root causes identified by our educational partners. And we're also going to conduct a deeper, a full root cause analysis when we do our CCASE 2022. So, but we've been in partnership with our state technical facilitators on that. And second, and then shout out, MUSD will be recognized at the annual Santa Clara County Bilingual Multilingual Learner Showcase for our continued commitment in supporting our English learners through our board policy resolution for implementing the California EL English Learner Roadmap, which is integrated into our EL Master Plan, which we updated this year, as well as our ongoing advocacy for bilingualism, which we're doing through our Pathway for SEAL for Biliteracy Award Program, and our ongoing support for our National My Name, My Identity Initiative to ensure that we foster a sense of belonging and positive relationships in the classroom, starting with correct pronunciation of our students' names. Virtual showcase will be on Thursday this week at 4:00 virtually. Thank you. This ends the LND report.
Thank you. And Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Wendy John.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I would like to provide an update on each department that Business Services oversees. For our maintenance, operation, and transportation MOT, we're currently working on filling the management vacancies. Our two supervisors along with the interim director are working hard to keep the operation running smoothly. They're prioritizing tasks based on safety and need. For our student nutrition department, and our current daily operations are now managed by our two supervisors while our director is on maternity leave. Fortunately, we were able to hire a retired director to promote, to provide some support remotely. For accounting and payroll, we're currently working on the 2223 school year's budget adoption while preparing to close out the current fiscal year. For our bond and facility, one of their biggest tasks right now is preparing the construction of the innovation campus for this summer. So you can tell this is a busy time of the year. All of our departments are doing our best to keep the operations running and flowing. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Executive Cabinet Team.
Superintendent, Mary Jew, if it's okay, could you repeat? You had discussed the CCASE a little bit and something that we were no longer going to do based on some findings. Is that what you said, something like that?
That's correct. So in our work with our CCASE 2021 plan, which we adopted, we have been working with our technical assistance facilitators from the state to get approval of that plan. And they requested that we dig deeper into our Section 504 numbers. As a result of that, we identified that we needed to relook at the measurable outcome number one and the root causes that we were using for it. And originally, we had a root cause of underutilization of Section 504. However, after looking at that, that does not, the data does not reflect that. So we are going to eliminate that in the section, in the CCASE 2021 plan that we will resubmit to the state. And then we will, when we come up to start planning for our 2022 plan, we're going to do a deep dive and look at root causes all over again.
So we were identified for Section 1?
No, no. So the measurable outcome number one?
Yeah, measurable outcome number one.
Measurable outcome number one was goals that we were focused on. And one of the root causes that was identified was underutilization of Section 504 plans. However, when we went back and looked at the data, it did not, the data did not accurately reflect that for our Section 2021 plan. So we're not using that anymore. We're going to stick with the other root causes, including.
Cultural dissonance, lack of complete, comprehensive, multiple-tiered systems of support, and lack of meaningful relationships with students of Latinx and African ancestry as well as their families. So those three root causes remain. And the one that we've taken off is the underutilization of 504 plans.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are all the reports given? Okay, we're moving. Item 17, Board Group Agreements.
The Board Group Agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. Per Board Bylaw 9001 amended on November 26, 2019, board members and the superintendent agree to keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Ask questions for our own understanding, be open and honest with each other.
No surprises include unapproved communication with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and/or board. Do I pass it down?
Number five.
Number five.
Be aware that your, that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance of public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Participate in professional development and commit to, commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Actively support the culture of "we in action." Need and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Alpitas Unified School District.
Thank you.
Thank you. Teamwork makes the dream work. Okay, we're moving on to item 18, Board Communications Request. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request a placement of items in future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student board representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each. And Scott, can you help me get the students on virtual first?
Let me see. Okay, so student board rep from middle college high school, Mira Bakhta, had a personal matter come up and so she couldn't be here, but she did give me her report. She said the middle college has started interviews for prospective students for next year. Students are meeting with college counselor, Mr. Granger, to schedule their classes for possibly the summer and fall semesters. We currently are doing state testing and are completing all segments on Wednesday, tomorrow. Student leadership is holding elections for president, vice president, and senior class commissioner for next year. Expect announcements about candidates and winners in the coming meetings. As always, I, Mira thanks you for your time, that you've allotted her for her update. And that completes Mira's student board report. Student board member Sidney Wong is not with us tonight. And then we have our student board rep from Cal Hills.
Thank you. My general overview, the Cal Hills April Academy had over 30 students finished the week strong and earned at least five credits in English, social science, or elective. Students created financial plans and budgets and heard from guest speakers about ways to be successful. Students also delivered their very own poetry, receiving feedback from guest speakers and peers. Come see their work at their exhibition at awards night on Tuesday, May 3, at 5:30 to 7:00 PM. April Academy was a huge success at Cal Hills. In Benz's Personal Financial Planning for the Future course, 17 students completed the week. Cal Hills partnered with Adult Ed to have a college and career fair on Thursday, April 21st. The two keynote speakers from that day are Mr. Norwood and Mr. Randua, the UPS Postmaster. Students also had the opportunity to learn about various jobs and talk about colleges. Students of college today, sorry, speaking of college today, was the senior field trip to San Jose City College, where they got to go on campus and see various professions in person. And also, Lions Club will be raising money for and participating in real. 30. In other news, Cal Hills has also partnered with Alamo Rock Counseling to provide a bottom in life skills curriculum for all students. For me personally, I got to see the different ways to handle negative mindsets and how to react to triggering situations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Michael Tai.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'll keep my events brief. Went to a lot of things and I was pleased to have a conversation with Congressman Jimmy Penetti recently, and I will cede the rest of my time.
Okay, Trustee Lynn.
Thank you, Board President Yip Chuan, and good evening, community members. The only activities that I have for the past week is the annual Rotary District Conference over the weekend that I attended in Sarawak. Thank you.
Click no.
Yes, I attended the Santa Clara County School Boards Association meeting, attended the Latinx Awards here in the district, also got a chance to see the Russell track that is close to completion. I think we'll be very happy to see the utilization of that in the upcoming school year. With that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And Vice President Norwood.
When was our, when was our last board meeting?
A month ago or so.
Trojan Olympics, MCE, intro to golf, parent conversation, Santa Clara County Legislative Action Committee, economic development and trade. I would rather forego those items and I would like to do this, take this, take my time instead to recognize Diane Foote from the PTA, the California PTA. She recently passed away. Diane was instrumental in the development of a number of our PTA programs and she really cared about Alpitas in terms of the work that she did. She was instrumental in the launch of our inclusive PTA. She passed away on April 19, 2022, and her celebration of life is this Saturday. You can find out more information on her by just Googling her name, Diane Foote, with F-O-O-T-E. She will be sorely missed in her work and her commitment to kids and parents and their development and support of children in schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Norwood, maybe we can take a moment of silence for her? Do you want to do it now or at the end?
We can do it now. Probably fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for my report, I went to the MHS NJROTC Annual Military Inspection with Vice President and Superintendent, the STEAM event, SBA meeting, team hall meeting, Adult Ed Appreciation Breakfast with Vice President and Superintendent. And we also went to the Weller Polar Player. I went to Russell to check out the new science curriculum that we approved not long ago, the Latinx Award Innovation Campus Fundraising Event with these two. I also went to the NJROTC Military Ball. And then today, I read to second graders at Burnett this morning. Thank you, coawanas, for organizing that wonderful event. I loved it. And now we're moving on to the next item. Oh, this is your part, Superintendent Reports.
So it's time for the quarterly update on any Williams complaints that the district may have received. And to remind you that Williams is a law that was passed and its purpose is to assure that learners have credentialed teachers, safe learning environments, appropriate furniture, and also access to materials that they need for class. And we have had no reports this quarter.
Thank you. Action, item number 20, action item. A, Business Services certify the disclosure of the Alpitas Management Association?
And for Alpitas Management Association.
Yes, and for Mopitas Management Association, since they are not a bargaining unit, normally is, uh, they are not required to have a financial disclosure under AB twelve hundred. But as a practice, to be transparent, we would like to disclose the financial impact, just the same way that we did for MTA and CSEA. So we use the same document that I shared my screen here, and you can see, and we listed the detailed agreement here. So for MMA Group, they will get a five percent salary increase as a me too to the other two bargaining unit effective July first, twenty twenty-one. And their health and welfare cap increase from, um, one thousand seventy-one dollar to one thousand one hundred seventy-one effective January first, twenty twenty-two. This is also the same as the teachers and the classified employees. A mileage stipend increase of seventy-five dollars per month, that's the cost of fifty-eight thousand effective July first, twenty twenty-one. And also, we offer the staff who use their personal cellphone for district business will receive a stipend increase from thirty-five dollar to fifty dollar per month effective July first. The cost of this is neutral since the district will also pay fifty dollar to the, uh, for data plan if, uh, the input, if the manager is going to use a district phone, and also, and the district will need to purchase a phone for them. And the classified management also, uh, who had a fewer than forty hours of vacation at the end of the fiscal year eight, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty will be credited for two days and of vacation each year. And this just align with the CSCS contract for the classified employees, since classified management follow their practice. And we listed the, here is the financial cost for the current year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then the subsequent two years. And at the bottom here, the multi-year projection, this is our second interim information. Since in our second interim, we have already included this, uh, the, I mean, the salary increase and also the medical cap increase in our projection, so there's really no major changes to our current financial, uh, projection. So with that, um, any questions?
Is there any questions?
None.
Move to approve. Second.
Scott, can you do roll call?
Sure, Ken. Uh, Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to item number two.
Yes, this, uh, this is a developer fee, and the district is eligible to levy a developer fee. And, and in our, uh, tonight's, uh, board agenda, we have a three attachment in our, um, package. The MUP, the MUSD Boundary Map, this is a part of the document that, uh, required under this resolution that we're going to ask the board to adopt tonight. And we also hired a school facility consultant to do a justification report in order for us to increase the developer fee. Every two year, the State Allocation Board will adjust the developer fee amount. So the current year now, the, for level one, is four dollar and, uh, seventy-nine cents per square foot for residential development. And seventy-eight cents per square foot for commercial and industrial development. And before the board to adopt this resolution, we will need to hold a public hearing. So we will need to open the public hearing, and then you can, um, adopt this resolution to adjust our level one developer fee.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay, um, Scott.
Okay, we, uh, the minute on the clock?
Wait, do we need to vote on that motion or no?
Well, we need to have the public hearing.
Okay.
Oh, wait, the roll call vote to open the public hearing, I'm sorry. Uh, Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Five oh passes. Now, we will put a minute on the clock for the public hearing. And actually, we do have a hand raised, Allison McDonald. Allison, we are going to take you off of mute. You'll have two minutes to speak. Uh, take yourself off mute, Allison, and you're good to go.
Thank you. Thank you very much, um, that evening, board and staff. Um, I was, uh, interested to see that this was coming up. I wasn't aware that the state would be making changes that the district would be required to adopt if they wanted to increase the, uh, fees, developer fees. And I just wanted to express my support, um, having been associated with the school district here for, uh, close to twenty years now. Um, I know how important it is to have adequate funding for our schools. We know what happened in the past when there wasn't adequate funding to, um, be acquiring land and building new, uh, school facilities as our population increased with the amount of growth that was happening at that time. And I'm, I will really encourage the board to adopt the increase so that we can be prepared for future growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, we have no other, uh, public comments for this public hearing.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, um, Scott, roll call.
Roll call vote, uh, Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Okay, now we're moving on to adopting.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Scott, roll call please.
Okay, roll call vote, Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Alrighty, moving on to, uh, twenty, A three. Adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Two Point Three Seven, Urgency Measure Resolution, Implementing New Developer Fees.
Right, well, thank you, board, to adopt the first res- uh, resolution basically to, uh, adjust the fee. So now the fee, uh, the just, normally we will have to wait for sixty days in order to collect this new fee. By adopting this urgency measure resolution, it will allow us to collect the fee for thirty days, effective tomorrow. So that is the purpose of this resolution. And, uh, at the next board meeting, I'll bring another urgency resolution and to allow us to do another thirty days until we fulfill the full sixty days, uh, time period.
Motion to adopt Resolution Two Zero Two Two Dot Three Seven.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Scott, roll call please.
Roll call vote, Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, item number, uh, four now, um, conduct public hearing and adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Two Dash Four, uh, Forty, authorizing dedication of easement to the city of Mopitas.
Yes, as you recall, on March twenty-second, uh, at the board meeting, we asked the board to adopt the resolution with an intent to grant this waterline easement to the city. Now, this resolution is the board, to ask the board to officially authorize the dedication of this easement to the city of Mopitas.
Motion to conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Twenty Dot Twenty, Twenty Twenty Two Dot Forty, authorizing dedication of easement to the city of Mopitas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, Scott.
Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh. Okay, we're gonna give a minute for a public hearing. Okay, we had no public comments during that public hearing.
Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Move to pu- close the public hearing. Second.
You have a motion and a second, roll Scott, roll call Scott.
Roll call vote, Board Member Tsai. Board Member Tsai.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Member No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Okay, so now we're moving on to the adoption of, uh, Resolution Twenty Twenty Two Point Four O, authorizing the dedication of an easement to the Mopitas, uh, city of Mopitas.
We did that.
Oh, we did that already, I'm sorry, so it's number five now.
Number five.
Yeah, um.
Motion to adopt Twenty Dot Twenty Two Dot Thirty Eight, adopting the mitigated negative declaration, adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approving the Mopitas High School Performing Arts Center and Gym Project.
Second.
Scott, roll call please.
Okay, roll call vote, Board Member Tsai.
Hi.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, moving on to B.
Before the board, uh, to move on, we actually have our consultant, Christina Lau from, uh, AI, uh, MG, MIG firm uh, here with us, and we would like to, we would like to have her still to walk through the process as part of the uh, E, uh, environmental impact study process for the high school gym and theater project. Uh, Christina.
Hi, hi, everyone. Christina Lau with MIG here, project manager for the, um, for the preparation of the environmental document. I have, um, Mike Campbell with me tonight. He's our Director of Environmental Analysis at MIG, and he's gonna give a brief, uh, overview of the environmental documents prepared and, uh, the review process. Hi, Mike, are you there?
Mike, you need to take yourself off of mute.
Okay, how's that? Everybody hear me?
There you go.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Wendy, thank you, Christina, and thank you, members of the board. My name is Mike Campbell. I'm the Director of Environmental Analysis for MIG. Um, Christina is our project manager for the initial study and the negative deck, uh, prepared for this project. Um, just briefly to summarize the environmental review process we did on this, uh, MIG prepared the draft initial study, mitigated negative declaration for the project, which concluded that the project would not result in any significant unmitigable impacts. The document was published on the city's website and circulated for public review on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Following a thirty-day public review period that ended on March second, twenty twenty-two, MIG prepared the final initial study, MND, which consisted of responses to comments received on the draft document, minor text revisions to the draft document, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project. There was one comment letter received during the public review period from the city of Mopitas, uh, which was addressed in the responses to comments. And the final initial study, MND, was submitted to the district on March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Um, that summarizes the process, and Christina and I will be available to answer any questions you have regarding that or, uh, anything else regarding the, uh, initial study or the mitigated negative. Thank you.
So Christina, and by doing this process, we fulfilled all the necessary steps for this EIA study, correct, for this project?
Correct.
Before, uh, the state architect, uh, DSA to approve the design?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I was glad to see that we can move forward with the project, and there wasn't anything discovered in those areas, because it hasn't, I think that was, that school was done in sixty-five. Um, so you never, and the rules were different back then to a certain extent, so I'm glad the, 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 the findings showed, um, no additional work needed to be done. I'm very familiar with the mitigation process and how long it could take, so I'm glad that we're, we're able to move forward with this project.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, thank you, Christina, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We're moving on to twenty B, Superintendent's Office.
So it's the second or the last board meeting of the month, and, um, we are bringing forward A B three sixty-one to extend it for an additional thirty days. But before we do that, we'll do the Autism Acceptance Month. Very slick.
Motion to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Two Dot Three Nine, recognizing and honoring April, um, twenty twenty-two as Autism Acceptance Month.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, roll Scott, roll call.
Can we, uh, we have a video resolution?
Oh, should we approve that?
You guys are way ahead of yourselves.
Um, I just would like to share, um, gratitude out to Sarah Davis, who worked with our students, um, specifically, um, Andrew Campesano, Addison Huiang, Leighton Mintu, who you will remember from last year, you'll see him again, Katie Mackey, and Stacy Pham, who put together our, uh, a video of our autism resolution for this year.
Autism is a developmental difference that makes typically manifests during the first few years of an individual's life regardless of race, color, and social and economical factors and results from a different type of neurological wiring that affects social cognitive and communication function. Whereas the difference range widely in each individual and are as equal quite as in every person's neurological design. And the difference is understood and has a disability in today's mainstream society largely built by neurotypical individuals.
The autism, I mean, it has on the media, uh, society to move from using awareness to, and it's, it's emotive ostrich gene and inclusivity, who else are affected by autism? The levels of awareness have spanned tremendously since nineteen seventy's where when, I mean, when the fight was fighting, was on fighting cure. Today, the use of various evidence-based practices has resulted in educational improvement role such as in main. higher success in making individuals with autism. As a result, may adults with autism lead in a better and successful lives as compared to the nineteen-seventies.
Whereas in fall of two thousand twenty, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, reported that approximately one in fifty-four children in the U.S. was diagnosed with autism. This number seems to be on the rise due to higher awareness and increased testing in the early developmental phases of an individual's life, which allows for earlier intervention. Whereas young adults with autism are li- are less likely to continue their education, pass secondary school, and thirty-five percent do not have a job or receive postgraduate education after leaving high school due to lack of adequate in- integration support. Very few colleges and universities have established on-campus pro- program for ner- neurodiverse, neurodiverse students, once they are enrolled, offering academic support as well as assistance with life skills to ease the adjustments to college lives. Whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support service to ensure their healthy safety and well-being. Families need support with the psychological and economic challenges that autism presents, including seclusion, isolation, and segregation from mainstream society.
Whereas the U.S. Department of Justice has reported that the rate of violent crimes against people with developmental issues and other disabilities is doubled as compared to people without disabilities. Individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder may be at higher risk. Whereas when youth with autism get to participate in programs in their community with their family, friends, and neighbors, they learn from their peers who serve as their circle of support and also as role models to helps, help them sup- uh, help them with social skills and communication, thereby preparing them for a life of dignity and respect within the community.
Um, whereas while inclusion and acceptance is at the center of our culture, we, it is natural, at, naturally at the heart of our students and makes this where for time to harness the awareness and inclusive beauty of society by accepting people who are different. No matter what is heard, their difference is not therefore be it resolved that Melpitas Unified School District hereby proclaims the month of April as autism acceptance month and encourages all educators to celebrate this occasion with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs for fostering integration and inclusion, passed and adopted by the Melpitas Unified School District Board of Educating Education.
Great work.
That was incredible. That was, that was incredible. Um, just to watch them do that, that was, um, that's good work.
Yes, yes.
That's really good work.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for pausing us on that.
Thank you all the students for doing so.
And the link is actually available on our board agenda too.
We need the vote.
I think we, we're doing the roll call right now.
Yeah, uh, um, so we had the motion by VP Norwood, the second by board clerk Yo, and now we'll do a, uh, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Hi.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Uh, board clerk Yo.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Okay, superintendent.
Next is our monthly, uh, item to extend for another thirty days, AB three sixty-one, which allows through January twenty twenty-four, if conditions are met, to, um, declare a state of emergency so that board members may attend virtually.
Move to adopt AB three sixty-one.
Okay, we have a.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussions or comments? Okay, if there's none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, board member Si.
Hi.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Yo.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
No.
Board president Yip Chuan.
No.
So that is, passes three two.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Uh, we're moving on to item twenty-one, consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There's no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items?
Move to adopt consent items.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please, Scott?
Roll call vote, board member Si.
Hi.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Yo.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Thank you. Okay, um, we are now moving on to twenty-two, item twenty-two, dates of future board meetings. May tenth, tentative study session, four P.M., tentative, closed session, five P.M., open session, seven P.M., hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, or boardroom. May twenty-fourth, tentative study session, five P.M., tentative, closed session, six P.M., open session, seven P.M., hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, or boardroom. Um, item twenty-three, are there any announcements or reminders? Um, let's start with the executive team here.
I have, uh, announcement, two announcements. First, uh, for the May tenth board meeting, I've been asked to present to the San Jose Everian Community College District at six P.M., um, MUSD Innovation Campus. And so that's the reason for the slight adjustment in closed session for May tenth, as I'll need to leave the district at about five twenty in order to get to their board meeting and then return, uh, right after my report there. And secondly, I would like to make sure everybody knows that our promotion ceremonies for eighth grade and our graduation ceremonies for high school and adult school are on our district events and also community events calendars, and they begin the last couple of days of May and into the first couple of days of June. And so we are very close to the end of this exciting, learning, growing year with a lot yet to do.
Thank you, thank you, superintendent. Are there any other announcements or, uh, reminders? How about board members?
So, um, the Melpitas Rowery Club will be having a, a golf tournament, um, to, um, raise funds for, uh, the various charities that they support. Uh, that will be Saturday, May seventh. Uh, they're still actively looking for golfers, so anyone that would like to participate, please come out. They will also have a dinner afterwards too, so if you're not a golfer, please come out for the dinner as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other, um, announcements? Um, if not, I have an announcement, um, tomorrow, the Melpitas Chamber of Commerce is having a job fair at the community center. It's from three to six P.M., so, um, all students, um, are welcome, even adult ed is welcome. We have twenty-six companies that's gonna be there, and, you know, it's from dentistry, um, to, uh, you know, high-tech, to insurance, um, we have a lot of, uh, different varieties of companies out there, so these, uh, employers are hiring, whether they're part-time jobs, full-time jobs, some of them are looking for interns, so it's gonna be at the community center, so we hope to see you. Thank you. Um, if there's no more, I'd like to, uh, motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have a motion and a second, go ahead, Scott.
Roll call vote, board member Si. Board, board member Si.
He's abstaining.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Yo.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.